One, two, one, two. One, two, one, two. Alright, cool. So hey, what's up? It's, uh, we're gonna do more Xenosaga? Episode 2? Ooh, I wanna go ahead and, uh, immediately be frank about something. So in the last one, we, uh, did the, uh, summer version of this dungeon. And then we got magically teleported into, uh, the same dungeon, except it was winter. And, uh, I'm just gonna go ahead and be honest, I did it off-screen because it is literally the exact same dungeon. Like, uh, this is the only, this is like the end of it, I think. And this is the only, like, unique, uh, screen in this dungeon. And just trust me, the, the, the rest of the dungeon was literally exactly the same one we did. I don't know why they did it. Uh, they did this dirty little trick of like, technically, the enemies are different. Uh, but they are also just the exact same, uh, models. And they have the exact same attacks and animations and whatnot. They're literally the exact same enemies, except they have like different names, and I think different weaknesses. But otherwise, it is just a rehash of the exact same dungeon. So I just went ahead and skipped, uh, to the end of it. At least, I think this is the end of it. Uh, because, uh, I don't think y'all need to watch that. It's, it's literally the exact same thing. So I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure y'all, y'all already watched me go through that once. I'm, I'm just, uh, skip ahead and hopefully, uh, it, it isn't a premonition of things that come in this game, because it's already a short game, so they're already like reusing, uh, dungeons. That's a little bit of a shame. But it is what it be. Also, uh, I did take some time to navigate the dungeon. Uh, mainly just to make sure I, like, understood the mechanics. And, uh, I'll go ahead and ravel on a little bit in the beginning, uh, just to share my findings. Uh, also, you, of course, I could, you, I also put a timestamp, uh-huh, so you can like skip this rambling if you want to. Uh, so something I figured out, uh, I wasn't doing, uh, the, uh, elemental applying skills, uh, entirely correctly. Uh, it's really good. It's really strong, especially because there's like a multiplier, uh, based on how many times you can hit like a, uh, an elemental weakness. Uh, I was trying to do it like on Ziggy and, uh, Chaos. It doesn't work for them, because Ziggy already has fire on them. Uh, just like, uh, I am able to maintain the fire in my chimney, because Cardinal be, be paying his taxes. That way, I don't have to go, uh, me and my wife and my kids don't have to go, uh, cold over, uh, in the deadly, uh, 60 degrees Fahrenheit, uh, winter. So thank you so much, Cardinal, for supporting your local landlord. Hope you're doing well, Cardinal. Uh, you caught me, uh, at the very beginning of the stream, so you missed nothing. Uh, I know you were gonna ask like, "Yo, did I miss anything?" You missed nothing now. This is just the beginning of it. Time to delve into Momo's Encephalon for an unspecified amount of period of time, here for the Friday, by Bible Studies! I'm telling y'all, I'm telling ya, hey, yeah, yeah, y'all, y'all pulled through. Y'all making me happy. Y'all pulled through for Bible Studies. Are, are, are y'all ready to talk about God? Y'all ready to accept God into your heart? Anyways, what, what's up, dynamic duo of, uh, Cardinal Hoshi and Ben Kres? Great to see y'all here. Uh, hope y'all are doing well. We're just, uh, getting tuned into some Xenosaga. Uh, just, we got tuned into, uh, Momo's, uh, inner psyche, uh, in earlier, uh, parts of the, uh, parts of the playthrough. But, uh, as I was saying, uh, we are literally at the end of the winter dungeon. I just did it off-screen. It, it is literally the exact same dungeon. It is literally, like, super, it, this is the only unique screen. The enemies are the same, the navigation is the same, even like the treasure drops and everything are the same. So I just skipped ahead to the end. At least, I think this is the end. So, so, uh, my content, I, I promise you, I promise you, you are not missing anything. It is literally the exact same thing. Hold on. On Wednesday, I legit was so tired of a game back, that I passed out almost immediately. Hey, rest up, rest up. I, I know it's, it's a tough, uh, it's a tough week, definitely. So, yeah, you know, I, I don't, I don't blame you for that. Uh, hopefully, you, you at least got, got a good rest for the, uh, for that, that you could for the week, you know? And, uh, good on you for putting in that good work. I am ready to talk about God! Grain, Onia, de, oh, 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 wait. I, I missed that. I was like, wh- what is Grain Onia DeTian? I was like, I was like, uh, I, I was like, yo, yo. These are like definitely some Dragalia lost characters, that I do not know anything about, but I support it. But no, it's, uh, it's, it's Ryan DeTian. The goats, for real, the goats. Oh my god. I, 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 who, who, who's Grain? Who's, who's Onia? Alright, I, I got bamboozled, I got bamboozled. Tomorrow should be easy now, yeah, hopefully, hopefully, so yeah. Anyways, I went ahead and, uh, as I was navigating, uh, I didn't mean to fight so much, but I accidentally fought a lot. So my characters are pretty strong. I still think the rest of the game is still gonna be a challenge. Uh, I'm gonna have to do it a little bit preemptively, because I, I've heard the rest of the game can be a challenge. So I prepped myself a little bit, so I'm just gonna like scroll through my characters a little bit. Uh, now I've got some characters on level 3 skills, and they can all access level 4. So it's gonna be a, a long time before you're gonna get there. Uh, Momo's got a lot of stuff. She has like a level 1 and level 2 almost cleaned out. And I need to talk about something, uh, really important, that's kinda weird. Level 31? It's, it's really, you level up really quickly in this game, so i- it's really not a big jump. Yeah, and I, I really just needed like the practice piece. I needed to explain something that like, I really did not, uh, understand. Second dungeon, they're like the 4th dungeon, which still is not that impressive. But yeah, I mean, it's a game where you start like level 16, uh, level 16 plus, but you know. Even though it's like the 4th dungeon, that's still not impressive. But I need to explain something that's really weird, that, uh, I don't get why they did this. So, mo- one of our most impor- important abilities is the ability to apply, uh, elements to our non-elemental attacks. And I kinda messed this up, because, uh, like, I was trying to do it on Ziggy. Ziggy already has fire. And, uh, Chaos already has aura, which is really good, uh, when they're fighting the right enemies. That, that's not a big deal. Uh, and then some other characters just like don't have an element. Uh, so like Cosmo doesn't have an element, uh, Momo doesn't, uh, Junior doesn't. And then with Shion, I, I really don't like what they did with Shion, because Shion, her first attack is thunder, and her second attack is beam, which is not the same, and then her third attack is thunder. And that's really bad, because there's a very big, uh, damage boost when you hit consecutively with the elemental weakness. So like I, I've seen Ziggy like hit an enemy that's weak to fire, and does like a, he does like 400, and then like 800, and then like 1200. So it's a, it's a big deal, except like, Shion, even if the enemy is weak to thunder, uh, Shion like breaks her own combo. Like, she doesn't like, uh, even if they're weak to thunder, she like gets it here, and then she breaks her combo, and then she like resets her combo here. And, which is really bad and really awkward to work with, you can also apply the thunder, uh, element to her second attack, which fixes the problem, but at that point, you can just apply it to anyone else that's like non-elemental. So i- it's really weird, but, uh, that, I figured that like, I really don't, uh, enjoy using Shion as much as I did in episode 1, which, I mean, i- it's good that there's like a little bit of a flip. I really like using Ziggy, uh, as a consequence, which is very, uh, surprising and interesting. I should really like using Ziggy. And I think to start like, uh, the rest of this dungeon, uh, I'm gonna run this team, like Cosmo's, Ziggy, Momo. That team's like a really good balance. Ziggy's like very, uh, physical tank, Momo's like very like, uh, ether mage. And, uh, I like Cosmo's right now, because, uh, she kinda like has like very comparable, uh, vitality and strength to Ziggy, while also having really good ether attack for like ether abilities. So she's actually like decently good at like pulling off like emergency like healing or e- other ether-related abilities or whatnot. And she launches in the air, which is always a very sick. Shion's, she is the one who labs combos all day, yet always drops the same combos during actual matches. They, they simply have to give you a very relatable, uh, main character in the Xenosaga series. For sure, for sure. Also, level doesn't really matter that much, because if you look at my actual stats, I, I can't really like compare it to before, but your stats really don't go up like that much when you level up. The, the main thing you really want is skills, and even then, it's so easy to mess up skills that I'm not gonna be like overleveled or nothing. Uh, it feels like most of the, uh, importance of the game is actually like knowing the mechanics, which is why I spent so long trying to figure it out, which by the way, the, the in-game clock is not correct. It's not correct. I always put it like idle by accident, but you know, i- it's gonna be fine. It'll be fine. Jin coming to the party, Amber's already level 30. Jinny will be totally afraid. Yeah, yeah, I thought about that. Jin's gonna be super behind, at least in skills. Even if they give me a level 30 Jin or something, he's gonna be super behind in skills, which he can catch up pretty quickly, especially because I know like what the good stuff is. But it'll be fine. It'll, it'll be fine. It'll be fine. Either way, like half the party doesn't get, uh, skill points when you like swap him out or whatnot, so it'll be fine. And, uh, the good thing is just, uh, I found a lot of items in this dungeon, which is good. Uh, I still only got like, uh, one, two really good revives, and then like eight biospeed. That should be like honestly good for the rest of the game. So anyways, I'm just gonna let it rock, because, uh, I, I'm, I'm just gonna keep going, because honestly, uh, y'all, y'all don't wanna watch that dungeon. Yeah, yeah, it, it, trust me. The dungeon is literally exactly the same, okay? Y'all didn't miss anything, okay? It, it'll be fine. It'll be fine. This is my story game, okay? This is not the beach, though. I'm gonna have to watch all the dungeon and all the menu. I'm sorry, you're, you're missing the authentic experience. Uh, you'll simply have to buy the, uh, episode 2 disc on eBay for $872. Hope, hope you're doing well, uh, Kres. Thank you for saying that. It's appreciated. Oh my god, Rubido's just like him for real, for real? Anything involving this guy is never good news. It never ends well. Is Persona 4 just a copy of the scene on repeat? My life is a, uh, copy of Persona 4, actually. Jesus Christ. Puberty? Yeah, this is what puberty is like.
Chief, the encephalon field structure has started to rapidly collapse.
Hi, Alan.
We should've known. Albedo anticipated the likelihood of an encephalon dive.
Did you say Albedo? If he was an acquaintance of Sakura Mizrahi as well, then it may have been part of his plan to bring Junior here.
Oh my god, Junior got that damage boost. Oh, oh, a- 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 ayo! Well, I can fight the small one, not the big one, though. Me and the bestie? Oh, oh, fuck. Just pal things. I don't think that's a thing that besties do together. Cardinal gets it, uh, Kres d- does not get it. Uh, that is simply what we do every other Tuesday, you know? Understandable. Oh, dog, wait. Oh, dog. Dog, it's the final boss, dog. It's over. It's over. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna fight the final boss in my swimsuit. What's this? Oh, I thought it was a new song. Actually, I, I think we noticed. So, I, I feel like, I also, in the process, figuring out the Stratus game, it's literally just you, you do burst damage. I can, I can pretty confidently say, you just do burst damage in this game. You just wanna like, get a bunch of stocks, and then just like go to town. I can, I can pretty confidently say that now. Although that was weak as hell. Let's see, let me see, uh, although we still wanna analyze him. I gotta let it rock. I, I gotta let the, 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 the very heavily compressed Momo rock sometimes. Okay, weak to fire, and pierce, and slash. Uh, that is very good for Ziggy, so I'll have Ziggy here. Let's see, and, uh, okay, we'll apply fire. That's easy enough. Uh, he has some good items, though. I don't know what awakening one is. Uh, I might bring very bad juju into the, uh, into the playthrough by, uh, stealing his copy of Fire Emblem Awakening, but I, I guess we'll let it rock. Uh, first off, oh, I actually can't move in this fight. Okay, that's fine. Uh, can I steal? Yeah, yeah, well, let's steal this thing first. This game ran, so Bravely Default could run as well, yeah. They're simply neck and neck. Okay, I got the weak one. Now give me the, uh, give me the rare. Albedo gained a new theme for his boss fighting 2, but has the normal fun battle theme when he's the final boss in 1. Makes, makes sense, like, simply a quality, me thinks. Also, oh my god, I'm getting a little bit lucky with like, uh, I think they both guarded. Let's freaking go. Although, okay, so we're gonna do stock. Also, Momo got a really good ability. Wait, what is this? HP drain, boost drain? Oh, I did, I did lose a bar of boost, didn't I? Uh, that should be fine. Although, uh, I need to show this as well. Uh, Momo, uh, was doing so little damage as we saw before, and then I got an ability for her called, uh, Ether Spear, which raises her ether attack by also, uh, lowering her ether defense. And, uh, physical characters have an equivalent that's like raise physical attack, lower physical defense, which is really good. Uh, that's actually like really nice. So, I'm gonna apply it in a second. I'm gonna get my stocks first, though. Do stock. I still have Albedo having the normal battle theme in 1, despite being the penultimate. Yeah, yeah, for real. I, I, I was completely convinced that Albedo was the final boss, and that he was just, the, the final boss of Xenosaga 1 was just gonna have the regular battle theme. I was completely convinced of that. Okay, that was, oops, I wasted a turn there. Okay, that was a block, and like, uh, I mean, that wasn't even a block, and like, that still didn't like, uh, do any damage. Although this is a debuff. Although Momo evaded that, so we should be fine. So first off, let, let's go ahead and apply our, uh, flame source. I'm gonna apply it to... Oh, yeah, that's fine, that's fine. I kinda messed up, that's fine. Put on her, uh, Ziggy, you're gonna do, uh, attack her, boom, boom, boom. I'm gonna apply flame on, uh, Momo as well. Uh, boom, 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 go here, do, uh, where is it? Flame. I would like having another boost, but it'll be fine. Two boosts should be good enough. Although I, I need to figure out the zone as well. So let's see, uh, just hit him like once. Break, break what? Oh, 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 he just doesn't break, okay. Albedo's arms are numb, bro. Well, he, he should, he should warm him up, bro. Okay, uh, wait. If they're numb, can I hit him now? Hold on. Oh, can I, can I just now break? Bro, why, why do I care if his arms are numb? Okay, okay. That's it. Yeah, app- apparently it does tickle, sir. Not frostbite. Yeah, he simply did not combine an appropriate, uh, instead of attire, I think. Let's see, uh, someone give help, he doesn't want to chat. He, he, he's gonna need it after this, let's see. Okay, so if I can't break him, can I do like? Uh, can I do this? Should I just do like this, then? Yes, that's it. Yes, that's it. Oh wait, okay, wait. Ah, I love it here. Okay, I, I think it's BC. I wanna boost Momo here. Oh no, it's probably B. Is it BCCB? Oh, that's gonna be annoying as hell. Hold on, okay, we didn't get it quite there. Hold on. I think it's B. Oh, his arms are gone. Oh, bro, his arms are not numb. His arms are gone. I missed that. Oh, he, he, his ar- his, sir! Sir! Okay, I need a Ziggy. Okay, hold up, hold up. Do, do... Uh, no, no, no. Uh, stock here, and then do BC, and I think it's CB, yeah. BC, CB, down him. I'll get Co- Cosmo's here. That's a lot of damage, ooh. Uh, I'll get Momo to do this. If I made a game, I would have everything, including the final boss, use the same normal thing, normal battle theme, but I would get a unique theme, just a random boss in the middle of the game, just to confuse the players, and, oh, oh my god! Okay, homeboy got smoked. He took like, like, 4,000 damage from like Momo alone. Oh my god, smoke. Oh my god, absolutely destroyed, okay. Uh, so that's the power of, uh, elemental buffs, as well as, uh, stalking and just doing all your damage at once. Uh, thank you so much, uh, Albedo. Fun time in the 3 minutes I got to know you. They keep his killer, though. Yeah, he kinda needed those arms a little bit for that fight, I think. They got them out here yelling. Relatable. It's funny about looking at Kirby's mouth. Junior looking at Kirby's mouth. Ayo, see, she said shut down the game, for real. Ayo! What is the heavenly angelic music for? What is that? Oh, she back? Momo cutie pie. We can, we can only wish. She's already the best character in her first incarnation. Also, damn, he did something really bad, and I feel like we were about to suffer the repercussions of that. Like, immediately, like immediately. Oh, na, na, na. The gospel? Oh, my man becoming the angelic matrix. What is this? Ayo? Well, he can't be gone, right? It's po- it's possible, but I don't think so. First off, we're gonna do, uh, boom, boom. Just in case. I think I'm, I think I'm gonna have to save, but we're gonna do this. Now we're gonna do, boom, boom. Save point. Oh, Shion next stage, interesting. In the Damarag, okay? The, the, the micro spoilers for the day. Oh, wait. Oh, dang. Well, uh, interesting, alright. Uh, please insert disc 2 of Xenosaga, episode 2. Okay, so that is, that is the, uh, that is the, uh, first disc already. Wow, well, huh. Hold on, give me a sec. I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, swap that out, then, real quick. Uh, wow, uh. I know it's a short game, but all I do is like skip ahead one dungeon, because it's literally like the exact same dungeon, but wow, okay. Uh, we, we are making good progress. Uh, that's very good news, alright. That, that's no problem at all. Alright, well, uh, I will go ahead and, uh, give me a second. I will swap out the disc, uh, give me just a few. And we'll be right back with disc 2. That was a faster swap than I thought, alright. I'm gonna make fun of Ziggy while disc isn't inserted. Uh, sorry, I'm pretty quick at it. Bro, another fleet got just absolutely obliterated in Xenosaga. That's like the 7th one. Just do not fly, just do not be part of a fleet. Do not fly out in space. You will get obliterated if you are in the Xenosaga universe. Do not, do not get on a ship. Tell him Shion, hopefully Shion can provide subtitles next time. Oh, my man stands up, though. Disheveled. I don't like that word. Ooh, holiness, I must still add it. I must still add a nickname. Literally every single place in this universe... Is a PVE zone. Considering it's like several million like... Galaxies and solar systems and whatnot. Uh, that's pretty impressive that like, no matter what part of the... Endless scope of the universe you are in, you... It is a PVE zone. Why she has to call herself Shion? Oh, is that Miyuki? It's hard to tell, if it's like a girl NPC, it's hard to... Okay, if it's a girl NPC from the first game, it's hard to tell if they're the same person in the second game. Except Shelly, I always know who Shelly is. Wait, why are you giving me like the... Why are you just telling me this? A lot happened in like the, the few minutes it took me to change the disc.
It's going to be a difficult mission, but... Make sure you come back. I'll be waiting.
Aw, let's go. Hopefully, she's a good person. Genuinely say that. Because, uh, Momo simply deserves, uh, a lot of, a lot more good people in her life. And also, uh, her design looks pretty cool for being an NPC lady. Ooh, Shion threw... Oh, oh no, that is Miyuki, oh my... Homegirl, she is not listening to you.
I'm listening.
Her ass is not listening. Hey, you leave Mizrahi the girl boss. She is not listening. Do not, do not Discord call Shion out of the blue. Aw, hell no. Been a while since we've seen her. I'm listening, even I'm not listening. I thought she was gonna combine that with "it's nothing". Oh, here we go! Let's go! That's what we've been waiting for! Let's go! Oh my gosh, she gonna end the call? Oh my god! Yo, Shion's a little bit of a hater. For that being like one of her like best friends, supposedly. Aw, Shion, that's because they changed their art style between the first game to the second game, that's why. Miyuki literally looking at Shion, literally looking away for no reason. They're simply having a fun FaceTime call, and then Shion did not wanna participate in it, she's like, "you know, I don't want FaceTime." Oh my god. It's not something! Let's go, let's go, it's the absence, it's the absence of anything at all. Shion literally, everyone, this Discord call ends when I say it does. Oh no! Shion a little bit like me. Although she just pulls the plug on the call, she's like, "bro, we're done here, let's wrap it up." She treats every Discord call like it's a business transaction. "I'm feeling restless, Alan had some sedatives on him. I should find him so I can get a little sleep." Oh my god, Shion needs that ZZZ quill. Oh, she got that nice view, oh, oh, let's go! Let's go! Who's in her party? Nobody, okay. Uh, that's fine. Uh, if I have to fight with Shion, that is, uh, not ideal. But hopefully they'll give me my friends back. I can fight with Shion, but, uh, also the last time I had to fight with Shion alone, it was like the, the part of the, uh... The part of the first game where I get like insta-killed by a Nosis before I got Cosmos. Which by the way, I would look back on it, and, uh, I think I got, uh, 4 game overs total in the first game. I think it was like, uh, the beginning, which wasn't even like a real game over, because like, you get insta-killed if you just like touch Nosis. I got killed once on the Wogland Day. I died to, uh, the Cathedral Ship boss. I died to, uh, the Memories boss. And I died to, uh, final boss Phase 1, but not Phase 2. And I guess I had to reset the Wogland Day boss, once. But that doesn't really count, so eh... I think like 4 or 5 game overs. When you look at it, not too bad, I don't think. Anyways, uh... Shoots! "Good day, Chief Uzuki, the entire ship is currently under high-security alert. Please be aware that even chief-level employees are limited to where they may go." I hate it here. Let me do a save just in case, I don't think I need to, but... Nice, I got my old save files, okay, interesting. There were, uh, are we in Damarong? That makes sense. Let's see, oh, is that Alan? What's up, homeboy? "Gonna go through my SMT 5 playthrough and check my death count just for fun?" Uh, that's why I kept count, don't worry! Uh, that's why we keep counting, don't worry about that, Cardinal, we got you covered. Oh, that's not Alan, that's like Alan's evil twin brother Russell. "Just take a look at this view, it's enough to make you forget about what's going on. Isn't it marvelous the Damarong not only houses corporate facilities, but also everything from residential areas to entertainment districts? It's like an entire country." I guess that is interesting, like, they can just put like, uh, uh, entire like, uh, towns and civilizations in ships, if they wanted to, which is kinda like the Xenobait X, uh, plot point, isn't it? "Oh, it's you, bro, I'm sorry, you're used on the move, bro, you don't stay at one place, that man's not an NPC." "I heard from a friend in 2nd Division that the CEO himself ordered custom-made Ams to be sent to 2nd Milsha. It seems they're going to use this opportunity for a real-world combat test of the new model." Oh, I hate it here. 78% of them were against Shohei Yakuza. That's not lowballing it, uh, a little bit, but you know, yeah, I guess I could see 78%. Well, it's getting a little bit low, I'd say like 93, but it is what it is. Nah, the Yakumo Saga is simply one of the most iconic sagas on the Cardinal stream. "Russell got a new haircut, that one's reserved, yeah, for real." I always think about that, you know? If there's like a, a very like out-there hairstyle in a video game, and then you, and then like... And then like, uh, it's like a very out-there hairstyle, and then they throw it on like an NPC, even though it like, very much belongs to a party member, it's always very noticeable. I don't know why, but I think of like, uh... I think of like, uh, what is it, like, uh... Jump Force, like that, like my shoulder jump fighting game, where like you can make your own avatar, and they let you like, uh, use some of the characters', uh, hairstyles, as your own hairstyle, but that means you can like, make your, make your, uh, make your avatar look like, uh... Look like Yu-Gi-Oh! And it's like, it's like, huh, I wonder who that hairstyle belongs to, you know? It's like, yeah, bro, you ain't fooling nobody, bro, that's the recolor Yu-Gi hairstyle, bro. "That's our CEO for you, always on top of everything." I'm a little bit of CBO of a CEO myself, I guess. Never forget the Oni, Eligor, and Andrus fights? Oh, and Byaku, I could not beat that thing. Uh, a lot of formidable, formidable, uh, opponents in the, uh, SMT 5 playthrough, the Harmo playthrough, by the way, I gotta specify that. "The most universal hairstyle ever made, Yu-Gi." Yeah, just look up like Yu-Gi-Oh, like, uh, like spot the main character, uh, in any screenshot of Yu-Gi-Oh, especially when they're like in the classroom. Uh, very hard game, you know? "Hello, this room is currently used by the observational team." "Hello, this room is currently used by the observation team." "Hello, this room is currently used by the observation team." "Hello, this room is currently used by the observation team." Thank you so much, uh, Wage, I think that was her name? I pulled up his text box 4 times, I didn't even read his name. "What's up, uh, Milus? You've got to be kidding me, I worked so hard to get into Vector, and I even got assigned to Headquarters, but I didn't expect my first job to be something this big." "I didn't join this company to fight a war?" Yeah, kinda true, yeah. I'd be so mad if I got hired like a part-time internship, and like, "by the way, you're gonna commit war crimes." I'd be like, "bro, what the hell, bro?" Yo, thank you for your comment, Cardinal, let's see what Cardinal said today. "We just got a letter, we just got a letter." "Hello, this room is currently used by the observation team." Oh, uh... You mean the chatroom? "There better not be nobody observing my chatroom, especially not an entire, uh, team assigned to observe my chatroom. They are going to witness many atrocities and terrible things. If the character creator doesn't let me have a hairstyle that's bigger than the rest of my body..." "My body, then what's the point?" Wait, I think, wait, I, I think I remember like, uh... I think in Jump Force, you could give your character like the, the, the adult golden hair, except, the golden hair is like, if you don't know, his hair is like, a spike that goes like... Ludicrously high, like above like the camera? I think you could put that on your character in Jump Force, so you could have like your hair just go like... Like clip through the ceiling of every single building you go through. "Hello, this chatroom is currently used by the Malik Beer." Uh, you know, I like that one, I can shake on that, you know? Malik, he can, he can, he can work with that, you know? "What in the world is going on? The coordinates to the lost Milshin column are observable again. Couldn't the UMN Administration Bureau see this coming?" Uh, they simply could not. Uh, it was unpreventable. "It's almost like the Immigration Fleet expected the reappearance of the abyss in Old Milsha. Maybe they were involved in the failure of the Y-data analysis on 2nd Milsha as well." It's all a conspiracy. Uh, oh, is this Alan, bro? Now I keep thinking everyone's Alan, this is why you can't give that, that weird hairstyle that any, any males in this guy, in this game. Shout out to Soul Calibur characters who made their character a cube that covers their entire body, I love that so much! You find that cube, bro, you, 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 you trying to find my hip box, bro, you find the box now? That was so insane, oh my god, I love that. They should have never taken that away, oh my god. "The Immigration Fleet has hundreds of ships, they ignored the Federation Government's warning and have begun their descent. It seems their target is the UTIC Organization's central tower, Lapparanthos." Oh, that's definitely a dungeon, for real, for real. "Lapparanthos, nothing good can come of a place called Lapparanthos. The UMN Administration Bureau restricted gate jumps within the column, but the majority of the Immigration Fleet's ships have already completed their jumps. They're even restricting the movement of the Federation Fleet, why are they bothered to seal the gate?" Interesting. Okay, nothing too much here. I guess I'm just supposed to like, regroup with my, uh, my party? Oh, what is this, yo, what is this? Oh, what's up, the best, the, uh, Chris's stuff? Uh, I'm sorry if I butchered the name. "Vector might be taking a neutral position in this matter, but there seems to be a hotline between the CEO and 2nd Milsha's representative, Helmer. A new weapon was transferred through 2nd Division, so it's only a matter of time before the Damarong starts moving." "Are you looking for Alan to find Melatonin?" Oh yeah, I forgot, yeah, well, we're not trying to get worked on, we're trying to, we're trying to go to sleep. I forgot about that, thank you for reminding me, oh my god. Yeah, we're trying to get that ZZZ quill, I forgot. "Oh, Chief Uzuki, did you hear it?" Wait, you want ZZZ quill? No, I don't get that, sorry. Uh, "but we just made a transfer to 2nd Milsha under orders from the CEO." Oh, Peta! Oh my god! It's gotta be like the, the like, uh, Lois, like, like, uh, screaming Peta, like, at the top of her lungs in that new, like, uh, Family Guy episode. "Oh, Peta, out here committing war crimes on a Damarong again." "Hey Lois, get this." "We just dived into the Etephlon, uh, into Momo's mind." I just gave up on my Peter Griffin voice, I promise y'all, I'll work on my Peter Griffin voice, it's what the people want, and I will deliver. "Can you guys guess what it was? An ES, a real ES series, and it was set off the record." Yo, that's the best, uh, that Rising game. Oh, that's Alan! Oh, Shion, oh, it's Miyuki, oh my god! Yo, we got the entire crew here, oh my god! "What happened to your glasses? Weren't those glasses oppressive from Chief Kevin? I thought this was really important to you, why'd you take them off?" Oh my god, Miyuki got so much taste, for real. "But you look great without your glasses, of course." Oh my god, thank you so much, Miyuki. Alan, bro, this is the reason why I don't have my glasses in this game, or in Episode 3, Alan, bro, oh my god! I hate it here. "Chief, what's wrong? What, a sedative? Yes, I have some, but, are you okay? You don't look well, maybe you should go to your room and get some rest." "Yes, you're right, I'm sorry, I think I'll go do that." "Are you sure this is Alan? Oh, it is Alan, yeah, we've been bamboozled like 3 times in the past." I don't blame you, bro, I can tell by the animation, he got the, he got the hand behind his head. Uh, animation. "You don't look well, maybe you should go to your room and get some rest." "Thanks for telling me I look like shit, Alan." Uh, "Wando, yo, where's Cosmo?" Oh, I guess Cosmos is in this game, right, yeah, I know where he is. "Normal communications channels are restricted to give priority to military communications. We can still send work-related communications through the emergency lines, but there's no way to conduct any personal communications at all." Man! I guess that's why we could, uh, call Miyuki on FaceTime. Just questioning like every single like, man we encounter, you know? "Are you Alan? No, are you Alan? No, are you Alan? Nah, couldn't be Alan, it's me, it's Alan." I miss the Shion glasses for real, they are simply never coming back. It's impossible. She cannot get like, uh, her prescription, uh, supplied once again. It's impossible, it's nothing, there's nothing that could be done, it's nothing. "Alan's sedative is starting to work, I think I'll lie down for a little while." Bro, that worked fast, yo, Alan got that, that triple strength, uh, ZZZ quill, oh my god! That worked immediately! Sometimes that girl boss just gotta curl up like a shrimp on the bed sometimes. She took the sedative in the room? I feel like she took the sedative like, as soon as she got it from Alan. Oh, hell no, that better not be the... No, it is, I hate it! Nothing good can come of that. Oh yeah, we saw you like, once before. He's also in the Zohar. It's nothing, Shion taking the vision test, staying what she sees. She can't see anything, but she needs glasses, uh, it's simply okay, alright. Man, what is the Zohar? Mankind? Shion sounds so concerned, like, "I don't know where I am." She sounds so concerned, like, I don't know where I am. Bye, Feb. We'll see you again in like uh, three months from now. Give or take. Well, she got that comfy 20 degrees Celsius room temperature. Couldn't be me. Hold on, do I get to walk around at night? Oh no, look at the time. The director must be furious. I have to hurry to the communications room. Ooh, look at that shot though. That's a really nice shot. Ooh, that's a naza. Ah, that's a, that's a good nightscape. That's a good cityscape. Ooh. Hell yeah. Alright, alright. Anytime the Zohar shows up, uh, nothing good can ever happen. Uh, simply no, nothing good ever happens at the Zohar, of the Zohar showing up. Let's see, let's do this as well. Alright, so go this way. Oh, I guess uh, my choices are limited. Are you gonna let me through? Beyond this point is a restricted area where research materials, data, and weapons of security level A or higher are stored. Currently, all of the Dammarung is under security alert, so no one may enter without permission from the Security Division. I'm the Security Division. Oh, yo, oh, bro, this is the guy that Twitter's always talking about Chad? Oh no. Oh no, it's him, bro. Oh my god. Bro, he's even, he squatted down and everything. Oh my god. I'm sorry. You can't use this elevator. It's currently undergoing inspection. Please wait patiently until we finish working on it. Oh, what a Chad statement, for real, for real. I know it's terrible timing, but things just break down. I think we'll have it fixed soon, so hang on just a little longer. Oh my god, what a Chad move to fix the elevator for us. Let's freaking go. Oh no. Wait, where do I go? Wait. Wait, can I leave through the right? Okay. Alright, yeah. Shion needs those glasses back ASAP because uh, her sense of navigation is all over the place. Let's see, ooh, that is, that is a nice shot though. Although, I feel like it's gonna be like, you know, like Resident Evil. Like, I have like some dogs, like jumping through the window. That's aesthetic as hell though. When this game wants to look really pretty, they can definitely achieve it very easily. Oh my god, they still got you working? Oh my god, oh my god, they got you complaining too. Oh my god. They didn't fix anything about your situation. Okay, what's up, Alan? Uh, tell me how to progress. We took a little bit of a nappy, but it's okay. Oh, Shion Gaming? Oh no, they're gonna change their voice. Oh no. Last time I had to, I had to confirm my memories and, That didn't go too well for me, or Junior, or anyone involved. I'm gonna need you to elaborate a little bit more. Imagine if I, every time you went to sleep, you had some plot significant revelation about your life. That doesn't happen to you? I'm on like chapter 87 of my life. Oh, now we know. Finally, more Shion trauma. It's been about dungeons since we got that. It's only been a dungeon because uh, we repeated a dungeon. Man, Alan. Shion was mad. Man, Alan, I was having a very plot important discussion. Well, it's not been just coming any moment, my singular cooking and delivery. I don't think my sleep is telling anything. I don't know. It might happen one of these days. I could see it happening. I haven't did a lot of stuff. Oh, the Alan for today. Let's go. My party's a little bit lacking right now anyway. Alan, you can come with. Hold up, hold up, let's verify. Let's see, the transport is located. Grab Alan in my pocket. Let's go. I got that pocket, Alan. Let's freaking go. Although, I don't got the party member, Alan, which is a little bit unfortunate because uh, Uh, that machine gun he did like uh, that one time, like the very beginning of the first game, that would have gone crazy, but uh, he's not gonna be the man with the machine gun. Extra Alan. Just a little pocket Alan for a day, he thinks. He's like a good luck charm, you know? He's not gonna do much more than that, but you know, appreciate it nonetheless. Although, is Chad finished? I would appreciate it so much if uh, you finished fixing that Chad. Oh, let's go. Whoa, what a Chad move to fix the elevator, right after I uh, decided I'm gonna illegally transfer myself Uh, in the uh, other part, other part of Milsha that I need to go to. Oh, let's go, Brady. He, he's sleepy. Let's go, yo, let's go. What a, what a Chad move for Chad to also uh, drug the, drug the, the security with sleeping pills. Emotional support, Alan, that he can take with you on public transportation. You know, he just fits in your pocket. He's just a little guy, you know? See? And then, and then he uh, he becomes a big guy whenever you need to have a plot important discussion. I think the crap we're at there is below us in the research block of the restricted area on the double A rank private dock. The security here is reinforced at night, so there will be robot sentries all about. Well, let's go have some fun, Alan. Chi- Chief, is it me, or are you a bit too excited about this? Oh, did I hand you a stimulant instead of a sedative? It, it'll be fine, Alan. It'll be fine. Anyways, Dammarung. Oh, do I have to fight? It'll be fine if I have to fight, but uh, I only got one. Oh, there's traps. Okay, I gotta fight, hold on. Okay, come through the door. Okay, do this. Yeah, come get me. Oh, I got him. Oh, I got him, I got him. Alright. He, he was through the door. He was just behind the door, alright. Oh my god. I forgot about the swimsuit after so long. Let's see, let's do uh, boom, boom, boom. Also, the swimsuits are just, oh, they're really good, so I'm just gonna leave it, because uh, I needed the extra skill points. What are you, beam and thunder? Oh, that's both of my attacks. I guess they wanna make it easy. This area is off limits to unauthorized. Don't worry about it, alright? I'm authorized, okay? I'm, I'm authorized, alright? Don't worry about it, don't worry about it, alright? He didn't even attack me. He didn't even fight back. He was just like, yo, just leave, bro. Just leave. I'm the one in the wrong. I'm the one in the wrong there. Oh no. I'm sorry about that, Mr. Robot. Oh, I'll do one stock. Disengage your weapon and surrender? Yeah, about that. This area is off limits to unauthorized. Dude, they should not fight back. That's so funny. Oh my god. Yeah, no, no problem, yeah. Because they don't fight back. Shion destroyed all the security personnel. She's super mega fired, yeah. This could be a super duper mega uh, firing uh, if it wasn't before. Which I, I don't know how we're not fired. I guess they are, I guess, Vector and like the forces that be are like, so short on people, on capable people, that they can't fire Shion. Boy, it's fine. Meanwhile, my opponent just talks literally twice. Yo, that's a, that's a Cardinal beating my butt at a Guilty gear, because all I do is uh, pop off in the first round, pop off in the second round, And then uh, I see the chip victory screen. I hate it here. So predictable. Oh my god. And I'm telling you, elevator hall, dock, warehouse, conveyor belt room, storage area, research block. We got a water tank, wind tunnel lab, double A rank private dock. The passuage to the research block is in the storage area, so I guess I have to go to the storage area. You can't uh, operate those at all? What is this? I mean, are they even gonna fight me? Yeah, like, get me. Y'all look like chicken walkers. Yeah, just do this. Oh, I didn't even have to, oh, I had the stock bonus from uh, starting to fight. Let's go. The four-hit combo. At least they're weak to all my attacks. That's pretty good. See, uh, although they, they give me like no points. Which I think enemies give you the same points, uh, no matter the level. I think that's how this game works. No, that's fine. Uh, medkits, that's good. I guess I'm gonna have to manipulate these. I gotta hit a switch somewhere. Oh, no, no, no. They better not give me puzzles in my JRPG. I, I, I didn't agree to this. That's all I'm saying. Don't, don't put any puzzles in any RPG ever play ever. Just hallways, okay? Hallways, you know? Like, maybe tic-tac-toe and that's it, alright? I love using Miyuki's weapon to destroy company property collusion. Exactly, y'all really get it. Especially, the best part is, we can just blame Miyuki, you know? Like, like they're, they're gonna like examine the destroyed uh, robots and be like, yo, Yo, who made a, who made a weapon that could do this to our robots? Who made a weapon that's, that's specifically effective on her robots on two different elements? Miyuki. They're, they're gonna say Miyuki's name like she's Megan from Breaking Josh. Who could have done this? Miyuki. Final Fantasy XIII hallway stream, boy, I'm telling you, it's gotta happen. For real, for real. I, I gotta get around to uh, FF XIII at some point though. It's always a game I've been, at least somewhat curious about. Let's see, medkit L. Let's see. Okay, but I'm not wrong. To this point, I'd rather have hallways over open world things with lots of blank space. Uh, Check out Cardinal's playthrough of uh, Xenoblade 1. Check out Cardinal's playthrough of uh, Xenoblade 1. Yeah, but I'll, I'll take hallways because at least it's like a, it's like short and sweet, right? The only thing I don't like is when you make hallways, they're like really simple to navigate. But then you're like um, you like make me walk through the same hallway over and over, to like uh, hit switches or whatever. Or when you make hallways, and then somehow the hallways are just like, Super dire to navigate somehow. I think about like uh, the fucking uh, ship In Zilia 1, where I had to like, I think I have to look up my map for that, because I'm like, bro, I literally don't know where to go. Oh, hell nah. How do I get off this ladder? Oh no. Wait, how do I get off the ladder? Hold on. That was weird, okay? That was weird. Push the button. Wait, what am I doing? Oh, do I have to time this? Aw, hell nah. Uh, I, I have to time it to the, to the menu navigation? To the UI navigation? Oh, hell nah. At least you don't pretend there's actual things at all. Yeah, for sure. Aw, there. OMG, I hit... What did that do for me? Rhythm game, let's go with the rhythm game with no music. I wonder what that button does. Chief, we probably shouldn't touch it. Oh, be quiet. Eh, 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 you may be right. No, be quiet. I'm on my DD era. Oh, 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 we about to get people killed on this ship. We about to get people killed on this ship. Oh, no! Alright. I told you not to. Listen, Alan, now we can progress, okay? It's fine, it's fine. Uh, what is Shion being put into Final Fantasy Theorhythm, uh, final barline, wrong company, but still, well, I mean, they did put, Uh, oh my god, I, I can't get down this ladder. It's so hard to navigate that ladder for some reason. I mean, it's not impossible. They, they did put Zeno gears in a Final Fantasy game. Even though I don't talk about it, but like uh, They made, what was it called? Uh, that Chibi Final Fantasy game? Uh, World of Final Fantasy, and like, you ever talk about like how I had Sora in there? But like uh, Remember that game had a uh, it had an optional boss uh, called uh, XG? And when your character's like, fight that boss, they're like, oh, can they even put that in this game? They, they say like some fourth wall break or something, but it's really like the, oh my gosh, Shion almost died. It's really like the, the main mech of like the protagonist from Zeno gears. And he has like his attacks and everything. Which is like the only time I've ever seen like acknowledge his Zeno gears in like a modern thing, besides that Theorhythm game, which is kinda crazy. The security of this place is horrendous. Yeah, how am I allowed to just blow this place up? And even when they do like engage with me, all they do is, all they do is yell at me. Yeah, all they do is yell at this woman in her swimsuit, you know? Yeah, this area is off limits. Like, please leave. Like, if I stick around, are they gonna fight at all? Like, please leave. Like, please disengage your weapon. Please surrender. Ow, no god, no! Like, y'all can fight back a little bit. Don't you hate it when you fail the Rhythm Heaven mini-game and the room you're in blows up? This is like a horror game. I mean, like a, that could be a horror game, but I meant to say a horror movie. Ooh, two biospheres, that's pretty good. Okay, this dungeon looks like it's gonna be a little bit dire. It's gonna be like all navigation with no actual fighting. Let's see, uh, what is this? Oh, hell nah! Oh, hell nah, the worst kind of block puzzle. Oh, hell nah, what is this? Uh... I guess I'll just do it like this? What is this? The Amazon warehouse. Where, where's Carol at, bro? We, we, we need Carol right now, bro. Oh, hell nah. Oh wait, I can climb. Oh, wait. Wait, why? Nah, nah, I'm just gonna destroy all the boxes. That's all I'm gonna do. Is this to reset it? Oh, okay, it literally says reset, man. I'm good. Reminder of Brendan Hunter Megamix actually had a challenge named Lockstep Hell. Simply a reference to Amazon. Oh, I got some permanent blocks, okay, uh... Where, where am I, where am I supposed to go? Uh, whoa, I can, hold on. What is this? Okay, hold on. Wait, this, this is like the door, right? Okay, uh, Uh, reset it, reset it. Okay, Mr. Bezos, bring, bring it all back. Bring it all back, thank you. Uh, Where, where am I going? Am I going to the left? Is that, is that all I'm doing? I think I'm literally just going to the left, which means I wanna do like uh, I think I literally just wanna drop the dark boxes. Oh wait, I can, oh no, I, I, I see what to do. It's quite easy, it's quite easy. Hold on, let me try it again. Oh wait. Yeah, so I gotta get across, but... Hold on, let me. Oh my god, all the lock-on sounds. What, what's this big tower? Wait, what's this big stack doing here? Oh, what is this? Who put this here? Legitimately, who put this here? Okay, uh... If I can get there, that's not that bad, but I probably can't. The problem is I can't push blocks on top of each other. I need to do that. Hold on, this, this looks dire. Hold up. Oh yeah, I can go here, okay. What is thi- wait, what is? I can almost make it, but there's no block like, uh. In that middle way. Is there a block there at that middle chunk? Who put this here? Mutilic the defendant option in any RPG. Uh, Zeno Saga Episode 2, uh, really gets it because I don't know how to block in this game. I, I think there's supposed to be a guard command, but I literally like never have the guard command. So they simply said, uh, we are gonna get rid of what's, uh, not important. We're gonna trim the fat and all that. Uh, speaking of trimming the fat, wha- what's going on here? Hold up, hold up. What is, what, what is, what is going on here? Hold up, I need to take a look at this. What is? Wait a minute. I think it needs to be a, a, a certain height, so I can't even get. To where I wanna go, but I can't like climb. I can't, I can't, like, I can only reduce the height. I can't like get any higher. There's no like ladders anywhere, right? There's not like a ladder like here? Wait, what is, what is thi- wait, wait, wait. And then there's. Wait, what is this? Yeah, because there's no way to get across because. Hopefully this is, there's not something that has to activate another room. I would assume not. Well. Hold on. No, no, this is dire, this is dire, this is dire, this is dire. Okay, I don't need that. Can I just do this? I, I, there's like not enough blocks to like, eh, what? The, 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 this is my cover reviewer moment already. Do not put. Puzzles in RPGs, the worst thing they ever invented for real, for real. And I know everyone gonna agree with me. Uh. Because I can't push blocks, right? I can't. Wait, can I push these? No, I can't pull, I can't push. Nope. What? Am I just trying to? There's like not enough blocks, wait. Well, I might have to reset anyway. Hold up, what, what is? What is all this? Yeah, I don't get it because I can't like, uh. Yeah, I don't think there's a path. Hold up, hold up. I mean, there's gotta be a path, of course, but I do not see it. Because I have to climb up there. I'm trying to reduce all the stacks to like this height. But it still doesn't make a path forward. Hold up, I'm, I'm gonna give it a little bit more and otherwise I'm gonna go to my good old friend, uh, Game FAQ. Uh, could never be gaming, but, uh. You know, Game FAQ, uh, pretty cool, pretty cool. Uh, because I can't go like across here, like, just going from the right to the left, like, just like this. There's not enough blocks. Then what's up with the, like, the dark blocks? What, what is, what is all thi- they, they, they gotta get rid of the puzzles, for real. Although the first game didn't really have that many puzzles. They had like two or three puzzles, like, and that was kind of it. The rest was like navigation. So I guess I can't complain too much. Let's see. How do I even? Yeah, because look at this. There's like. There's like not enough, there's too many gaps to like make it across. If I just reduce everything to this height. Oh, I can, oh, I'm dumb. Can I just fall down? Well, what does that look like? Hand me the controller on the parsec right now. Aw, hell no. Persona 3 fest, don't even have a defend, they have a do nothing? Oh my god, bro. Persona 3 one of the go games of all time. What is? Wha- I'm flabbergasted. Wait, can I drop the, can I drop the left? Hold on. Can I drop the horrible left? Hand me the side controller. No, no! I submit to nobody except beautiful woman. Wait, what do I do with these dark boxes then? Okay, here, here's my idea. Can I climb? Me, the controller, Cyan. Oh, hell no. Aw, hell no. Yeah, y'all playing some sick and twisted demented game of a telephone over there. Or I destroy everything. That's not gonna do anything, but like, what does that look like? I'm not even doing it like as funny. I just wanna like legit see. Shion's had enough. She's like, she has, she's had enough at the Amazon fulfillment center, for real. Okay, that doesn't do anything. The, the, oh, oh, ay, ay, yo, segment address number one. Oh, wait, oh, I got it, yo, ay, yo, yo, Amazon's finished, Amazon's finished. Secret key eight, let's go. What does that do? Can I just take a look at that? Uh. The menus are, the menus are more difficult to navigate than you would think. Let's see, secret key eight, that is for level two H-class skill boost one. Ooh, hold on. That's really good. Oh, level two, level two H. Yeah, increase boost count by one. I need to build boost a little bit. Uh. Building boost isn't awful, but when you don't have it, it's really annoying, so that's a good backup. Oh my god, and then I'm back here. Oh my god, they surrounded me. Take that, Mr. Bezos. Mr. Bezos did not suffer a single. A, a single cent of damage. He just trapped me again. There's no way I have to. There's no way that's part of the solution. Okay, what am I? The only thing I can think of, there's like a ladder that I'm not seeing, but I don't think it's gonna change anything. Okay, this is just like the correct lyrics to Mr. Sandman. Uh, oh man. Amazon got all their secrets tucked away nice and neat, for real, for real. Shion, what she sees? And Amazon trucking the road as there was a thunder beam thunder to it. Can you walk diagonally? That better not be the solution. Hold on. I'm gonna climb very slowly, hold on. Let me see this. Oh, so I'm just gonna do this for now. Let's see. Hopefully I don't have to do something like in a, in a previous room, hold up. I'm just gonna like try saying this up. Do this. Uh, just an example, let's see, uh, let's get rid of that block. Boom, 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 boom. Yeah, get rid of that. I'm not like a hop or anything. Nope, I don't think I can, yeah, I can't like do that. Yeah, I can't like hop or nothing. I can't walk diagonally, that doesn't count. Good idea, though. Uh, what is, what the? Give me one more minute, otherwise I'm, I'm looking this up. I can fall down. Oh, I, I can't even fall down, yeah, I can't even like fall down, like the layer below, so. I. No, I'm, I'm lost, then, then I'm lost. I can't manipulate the room in any way? Yeah, I'm, I'm lost, so hold up. Well, I shouldn't have done that. I think I can do it, but also I don't have the control. Damn it, now, now I have to do it. Damn it, damn it. Why, now, now I have to do it. Now I have to do it. Aw, hell no. You need to make the stacks two blocks high. Well, if I make everything two blocks high, it like. It like doesn't work, right? Like, it still doesn't like give me a complete path? Well, first off, this, this is never, hold up. Let me try getting rid of the, the radical left, hold up. Bam, bam. Because even if I make everything too high. It doesn't like. It doesn't like, uh, provide enough for me to walk. So if I do like this. I get rid of that one when I'm on top. Like, that's a, I, I, I can maybe clean that up a little bit, but then like, uh. If I just make everything too high, that's kinda like, uh, the best attempt I could give it. Bam, bam. And then, see, I can't, I can't do it. I, I, I can't progress past the puzzle. See, that's so dumb. That, that's so dumb. That's so dumb, right? They literally made an unbeatable puzzle. That's so dumb. What were they thinking? What were they thinking? What were they thinking with that puzzle? Why, 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 why they bring a friend? Why'd they bring a friend if they, if I ain't even, if they ain't even gonna fight? Why, 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 why is the snail always popping up on me? What are they? Further destruction will be met with deadly force. Excuse me? What, what do you mean by that? This area is off limits, bro. They are mad. Oh, oh, hell no. Okay, now, 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 now y'all fighting. No, 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 no. They, they really hate me here. Aw, hell no. Alan is not helping. Shion, when she behind the McDonald's counter, making fries for some annoying person who would ask them without, ask for them without salt, I'll burn them to a crisp. Yeah, for real, yeah. Yeah, do not specify anything at McDonald's. It, 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 it ain't gonna happen. One time asked for no onions, they put extra onions on that. Hear me say no onions? They, they, they heard no onions? Dan Chris caught Ted Kersey. What a flex, what a flex, what a flex, what a flex. It's gotta happen like an echo effect. It's like really a drive the point behind. I gotta make the, uh, the stars appear as frequently as they can. I, I, I wish they were like always popping up, you know? As soon as someone catches it, someone else, like another star just pops up. Oh, man. I'm, I'm, I'm peeved off at that puzzle. I'm not pissed off, I'm peeved off. Is that better or worse? I'll let the chat be the interpreters of that. Yes, for no onions, now the person behind the counter knows your weakness and takes advantage of it? Why, why they gotta play my McDonald's order like a JRPG battle? What am I weak to? Onions and water. That's what I'm weak to. I can get combo by that if you do both at once. Getting fired would be the least. Yo, man up, bro. Let's go. Shion weaponizing a toxic masculinity, masculinity in her favor. Alan's face looks very funny compared to like the rest of the NPCs. It doesn't look good or bad. It just looks funny. There's water. Oh, no, no, please! No, my weakness, I'm begging ya! Oh, Cardinal Hoshi, I'm fucking dying! Hold on. I, I already uncapped it. Do, do y'all want like the weak ass cap sound? Hold up. It doesn't even make a sound. Hold up. It, it doesn't make a sound if I, if I, if I just like open it anymore. It's so sad. Shion has started a labor union. Good for her, good for her. She's the one unionizing all the Starbucks. Or like the, the Zeno Saga equivalent of Starbucks, Moby Dick's Cafe. I want y'all to know I took like, uh, six or seven gulps. And based on this game, every time you, uh. Strike the elemental weakness of an enemy, it multiplies the damage. So pretend, uh, take your, uh, raw. Take your raw, um. Attack value. Subtract one defense point for me because I'm like Koops from, uh, Paper Mario, that was in your door. I got that one point of defense. And then multiply your damage by six or seven times for every single time I, uh, took damage from a gulp of water. And that's how much damage y'all dealt to me. Y'all dealt, uh, very close to fatal damage. To me. Luckily, I will simply ignore the damage y'all did to me and continue playing the game. Oh my. But thank you for the hydrate, very appreciated. Oh my god, they sent Shion to the, aw, hell no, they sent her to the Scooby-Doo dimension! All I need is the Scooby-Doo chase music. And then we're like, all, this is where all the villains are, are always running through. Aw, hell no! Can I go through here? Oh, I think I have that one. Nope, I don't. They threw Shion in the trash. You hate to see it. It's like that guy from the first game that like, uh, couldn't make, uh. Common like phrases correctly. So you call like, Shion said like a, a diamond in the rough, she called it like trash. You hate to see the running trend. Okay, I knew it was gonna be an enemy at some point. I didn't expect it to be like a huge guy. Okay, that enemy did a crit and it was a back attack and it did zero damage. Y'all are, y'all are not bringing your best, that's all I'm gonna say. Let's go, let's go to the, no, no, there, there's no way. There's no way. There's no way. No, there's no way. It's not a brutal puzzle, but there's no way. There's no way. Well. Shoot, can I escape? I'm just gonna run, there's no point. I mean, I, I, I could get like skill points, I guess, but it's not that much. Oh, wait, what if we, no, yeah, I'm gonna fight this guy. What if we like drop something? You might drop something. I should try. I, I, I could check him out real quick, actually. At least, uh, Shion's kid is actually pretty decent for like being on her own. Oh no, this guy doesn't have anything. I'll fight him anyway. Why, 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 why are y'all popping off over me doing puzzles, alright? Yo, I, I am not playing that Professor Late in the game, alright? I play like the first three, they'll kick my ass, alright? Uh, five Shion concerns in a row. Uh, she is very concerned about, uh, being under attack, you know, she, she's, uh, being, you know, she's getting thrown in the trash. Uh, she's simply getting, uh, attacked very rudely and unnecessarily, methinks. Not a good day for Shion. She only got the pocket Allen to support. That, that's not very good. I've never actually played Late in the game. They're, they're pretty nice. Would recommend. I, I know I got the visual novel enjoys in the chats. I, I would say I recommend. For sure, for sure. Boom, boom, boom. Also, Shion's, uh, speed is pretty good. I don't know if I said this before, but I think she has the second highest, uh, speed. Only behind Momo by like one point, and that's actually quite good. It's actually not bad at all. Like, let me, let me see real quick. Yeah, I think they actually buffed their agility, which is a pretty decent. That's not bad at all. Well, they buffed their agility because they like lowered everyone except Shion's agility. So, uh, she has more agility as a result, so that's not bad at all. I feel like I would call him dumb while playing it and then continue to play if he's actually doing it. That's absolutely what it is. It's a, it's a perfect melody of, uh. You calling the game dumb and then the game calling you dumb repeatedly. Just like, uh, any good, uh, friendship. This is, yeah, I, I, dude, I'm totally gonna disengage to a weapon, so sure. Professor Lee Ton? He should get, ah, he should get off of his back and get back to work. No, bro, he, he lays out people named Ton. The, the kid named Ton? Gonna get laid out for real, for real. That's all I'm saying, bro. That's all I'm saying. He's gonna get absolutely demolished by a man who's basically like a, like a smiley face emoji. Okay, uh, please disengage your weapon, please. Oh my god! This area is off limits, unauthorized persons. This, I don't know why this is so funny to me. It's just, it's just the fact that they're, they're begging, they're pleading, please don't attack me, please just leave, please fucking leave. Oh my god. Okay, well, I need to explore anyway. And there was actually nothing here, that, that sucks. Oh, do I have to memorize this? One, six, eight, twelve? What does that mean? One, six, eight, twelve, two, three, wait, two. Three. Five. And these are like six and seven, right? Okay, I wanna get into four, okay. I think I wanna get into four then. Yeah, that's behind the locked door. Okay, uh, it's simple enough, methinks. Also, good, good on Shion for being like the, the designated like, uh, puzzle segment of the RPG character. I notice anytime I have to do like a puzzle, it's usually Shion. I think it was Ziggy like once. Let's see, uh, oh, I do have to do that stupid. Damn it, I, I, I do have to do this stupid puzzle again, don't I? Aw, man. I hate it here. This, 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 Zeno Saga Episode 2 gotta be my most despised enemy for real, for real. Oh my god, I can't believe Cardinal was right. I have to do, I have to do this stupid room again. This slander, for real. Can I just get up there? Please, please, give me a lift, please, please. The worst part is I don't even like get into the room immediately. I have to like. It's like, yeah, I have to like go in here and then go into another room. Yeah, this is annoying as hell, what the hell? Yeah, I like, I like go here, right? Well, like, I, I know how to do it now, it's fine. Wait, where's this? Wait, where, wait, wait, where, where's this? Where do I go? Wait. Actually, wait, wait. Open this and I just like never went in here, right? I didn't think it would send you all the way back. I, I, I didn't expect that either. Wait, did I ever go in here? Oh, oh, this is where we're supposed to go. Uh, that makes sense. Well, whatever. It's fine. I was talking solely about the door. You love to see it. Oh, wait, oh, oh, it's, it's a symbol for me. Okay, that's cool. Okay, let's go. Let's go. They thought about people like me. They thought about weak minded people like me. Thank you so much Xenosaga Episode 2, my beloved. Oh my God. If I had to do that again, that would have been the most brutal like 59 seconds of my life. For real, for real. This is so sad. Ask how still these Cidos, Hira San would say. The sign of victory. Reverse curse. Isaac could do the puzzle on his own copy, okay? You know, he's got plenty of pirate money to like, uh, get his own, uh, copy of, uh, Xenosaga Episode 2. Jay Se Wilt Und something, alright? He, he can do the puzzle on his own time, okay? Alright, I have to go to four. Uh, four is like, is it literally, is it literally right there? Oh, so I'm just gonna, uh, whoops. Oh, my finger slipped. See, uh, do I just do this? Oh, that's fourteen. Uh, that's fine. Uh, where's four? Hopefully I don't miss it. Eleven, oh. Y'all, y'all got four out here? Y'all got that, y'all, y'all got any of that four on deck? Y'all got any that have four in the back? Hold up. That's three. That's five. Oh, there's four. Cool. I think I only wanna go into four. Yeah, I think I literally just wanna go into four. That's fine. That works for me. Yep, here we go. Oh, let's unlock it probably. Cool. Anything here? Research block below. Oh, that's where we wanted to go. Cool, cool, cool. Shouldn't be that bad. Certainly they won't make me fight a boss, right? Maybe enemies, maybe a mini boss, but not a boss, right? Certainly not. We should be just fine then. Also, yeah, I, I know they joked about it. I know they literally said it, but I, I think we are going to get fired. Like, that, that's like an inevitability, right? For sure. Okay, skill upgrade C. That's not that bad. Oh, I need to see. I need to see this. What did I get from Alberto? He gave me awakening. What does my copy of Fire Emblem Awakening do? Uh, oh, double attack for Junior Momo. Cool. Uh, I could probably just pop that, but I'll wait until I have Junior Momo. Okay, that's cool. That's cool. And I just got like skill upgrades. Oh yeah, he gave me like 500 skill points. That's really good. That's really good. I don't know if I want that on Sheon. That's really good. I'll get out to Jin probably. Why is this top secret facility housing an aircraft, also a factory? Don't, don't forget the Amazon warehouse? And like all the war crimes and whatnot? Sheon and Alan will only get fired if they can, oh yeah, I forgot about that. Yeah, yeah. Uh, we are in a situation where, yeah, we will, we will not only get fired, but probably get executed, right? Going to jail and all that. It's okay. Uh, we're simply having a little bit of fun, methinks. Momo getting a damage buff. The rich truly do get richer. Hold on, I gotta say, uh, I'll try to go for it just because it seems cool, but like, uh, I haven't been able to do too many like, uh, of the double attacks recently. Oh, hell no. Hell no. What is this? No, no, nobody puts sign of victory. Don't put sign of victory. They could never fire the Sheon Labor Union proudly standing with two, two members. Oh my God. That implies that like Sheon asked like, uh, her friends, her fellow coworkers to like join the union. They're like, no, no, we're, we're not joining the union. Please join the union. It's a good cause. No, we're not doing that. More puzzle. Let's freaking go. I, 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 uh, go where? Go to game FAQs? Okay, what does this do? Am I just trying to like drop it? Oh, there's something like going on here. Can I go through here? Nope, I can't go down there. Oh, we're just trying to tilt it, aren't we? This is like a table, right? Are we playing like some really elaborate game like Super Monkey Ball? Can I get down here? Uh, nope. Then the only thing I can do is manipulate those blocks. Uh, okay, I guess I'll do that. I can't get down there. Okay, that did that. Okay, that tilted it. Oh, wait, wha- what does that do for me then? Uh, can I really not get down here? Oh, you know what I might have to do? I might have to activate something. I might have to like, uh, oh, that's gonna be really annoying if that's the case. I might have to activate stuff in other corridors, maybe. Oh, wait, can I, oh, this is water. Can I get in the water? Nope, I do not have the ability to swim. Then, hold up. Oh, I can read the instructions. Warning, heavy platform. If the platform is not balanced, it may tilt under additional weight. Oh, is that it? Wait, what? Y'all gotta elaborate a little bit more than that. Also can't walk across in any way. Yeah, I can't like, uh, okay, I can tilt it, but what does that do for me? oh, nah, they got the whole crew popping up? No, this can't be, this can't be, not, not, not that Judith conference. Not the, not the Nanoja. Oh my God, the cast aside FFZ popping up over the puzzle. Why are they popping up? Why, why would they be popping up over me just going in circles? What is this? Oh no, it can't be that enjoyable, methinks. Hold up, what is this? Okay, I, I, I am concerned that I actually can't do this puzzle right now. Oops, I didn't mean to do that again, but wait, can I go down here? Can I go like here? This is, wha- wha- what is? Uh, I am, uh, I am missing something because I, I can tilt it. I can tilt it like the one time. And then I can't like, uh, do anything. And I can't get below it. I can't swim in the water. Uh, the water is off limits to me. I can get in there. I can come from that platform, but then I can't, I don't know how that does anything for me. If I leave and come back, does that reset it? Or does it keep it the same? Because if it keeps it the same, I could just, uh, walk across. But then what's the point? I'm going, I'm going. I'm giving the, y'all can't see, but I'm giving like the fiercest scowl to this puzzle right now. I, I'm, I'm, I'm going, I'm pulling it up, I'm pulling it up, I'm pulling it up, I'm pulling, I'm pulling up that FAQ. I'm pulling, I'm pulling it up, I'm pulling it up, I'm pulling it up. Alright. Alright, alright, I, 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 yeah, alright, I'm, I'm, I'm going, alright, I'm, 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 I'm pulling, pulling it up. Reset, but we ju- we just started. Yeah, listen, listen, I, I gave it a fair shot, okay? I, I, I gave it a fair shot, alright? Alright, let's, alright, let's, let's work through it. Listen, we all have our weaknesses, okay? Alright? Hold on, okay. I haven't looked at it yet. Okay, let's back up, let's back up. Because I can't go that way. I have to walk so far back though. Okay, I don't get what this is. Oh, it reset that as well. I should realize, does that do anything? They look like doors, don't they? But they don't like, they have to do something. I can't like interact with them. That's weird. Can I get, there's nothing here. I would have to walk all the way back. In the Monster Zink stairway, yeah. It did look like Monster Zink, didn't it? Let me take a quick look back. I don't think I missed anything though. I'm pretty good at missing stuff, but I don't, I don't think I missed anything here. I have to walk all the way back. Hold up. I'm, I'm wa- I'm walking, I'm walking back and while I walk back, I'm, 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 I'm looking it up. Oh, the, the, the damn, the damn, the, the dammit. There we go. That's what I like to see. Let's see. Listen, if the puzzle solution isn't obviously, uh, in the way, uh, that is simply the fault of the developers, you know? Hold on, wha- wha- what am I doing here? Hold on. Okay, once you make it, boom, 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 turn, activate, you, boom, 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 ch-ch-ch. Okay, when you, boom, boom, boom. Wait a minute, what, what did I miss? Okay, I'm looking through here and, uh, uh, wait. Oh. Okay. Y'all. Okay, we can do this. We can do this. Okay. For, for the viewers at home, I'm, I'm, I'mma like, I'mma, I'mma give y'all one, one look at the puzzle. I'mma let y'all think about what, what, what do you do? What do you do to solve this? I, I, I figured it out, okay? And by figuring it out, I mean I cheated, okay? Okay, so there's these like crates and then, uh, there's only eight crates we can work with. So what do we do? How do we solve the puzzle? Uh, the game beat me, okay? The game beat me. The game beat me here, okay? It's so dumb. Hit it with a hammer. I, close. Hammer is back on the Elsa. So you do this. Everything in the room. Whack, yeah, for real. And then you go like here. Uh, hmm. Yep, definitely solved that puzzle, methinks. Yep. That is a successful puzzle solve if I've ever seen it. I love it. I, I, I hate it here. I hate it here, TM. Oh no, what is this? Who put this here? Ay, yo, who put this here? That's not how Cisals work, yeah. Wha- wha- what statement are I trying to make about Sheon? Oh, I, I should probably do like a bam and then double. Think this. Man. Okay, Sheon getting attacked is a little bit funny, okay? Alright. That was gonna take me a while to figure out, alright, y'all? Yeah, 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 y'all won't tell nobody I cheated, right? Yeah, y'all, y'all, y'all are nice and kind. Yeah, y'all won't tell nobody I cheated. Y'all will tell everybody, yo, I was watching Alpapi's side playing Xenosaga Episode 2 and there was this devastatingly brutal puzzle. I thought nobody in the world was gonna figure out how to solve it and then Sai, the madman, simply figured it out on his own, of his own accord and his genius brain. You know, just figured it out like it was nothing. It was so impressive. It was so crazy. Sheon getting attacked is a little bit funny. The force of the universe. Are they wrong? It, it's a little bit funny of a prank, okay? Alright, you have to, you have to weigh. You have to weigh the, the benefits and the detriments. Uh, you know, it's like SpongeBob reading the book, you know, one side is like, you know, for, you know, ruining Sheon Uzuki's life is fucking terrible. And then the other side of the book is like, ruining Sheon Uzuki's life is fucking hilarious, you know? I'll tell people what happened. I'll use a couple embellishments though. In my favor, right? In my favor, right? Oh, yeah. Go Sheon. You can do it. Just run a little bit faster. Just run a little bit faster, okay? You're almost there. Oh, oh, actually, we were almost, we are almost there. Hold up. Go here and then bam. You actually have to like take cover properly from the wind and then, oh, there we go. Push the button for real. Fosho. Fosho, fosho. Sai experimented with a puzzle for about eight minutes and then used game eight, one game for each minute spent on. That is not true. That's not what happened. That's not what happened. Uh, by embellishment, you meant lies and slander. I solved the puzzle on my own. I, I definitely, uh, solved the puzzle on my own with no help, no aid from, uh, outside factors. Uh, anyone that says otherwise is a liar. And also I can follow up that message with, uh, that? Yeah, liar think? Yo, what a good example. This was me when I, uh, spending like 0.2 seconds on the puzzle, uh, to simply, uh, divine the solution myself, you know? And that's messed up. Uh, uh, that's terrible. Nothing wrong with that, okay? Uh, you know, you win some, you lose some, you lose some even more, okay? That's like real life, okay? You know, I'm, I'm not gonna win all of them. That, that's fine, that's fine. I'm not here to please everyone. Ah, hell no. Speaking of that, where did they put me though? Oh, Sheon detected. Security alert. Please leave. They're, they're begging you. Please just go away. That's their security system. Also, yeah, they are gonna make me do a boss fight, aren't they? Ah, hell no. Sheon left Alan behind. They simply did that for, uh, game balancing decisions, methink, okay? Fair enough, fair enough, you know? They don't want this boss fight to be a little too easy, you know? Fair enough, fair enough. I can understand where Bananako is coming from. Alright, easy. And then, uh, I'll do, I'll do a stalk. I stalk, oh, I, I thought I could like boost after myself. Ooh, awesome. And that basically happened anyway. They might spawn more guys, but I think, I think this is it actually. That's it, right? I mean, that's fine. You can play the boss music, but that's basically a regular encounter. You didn't even give any drops. Oh, wait, I just noticed something. They give me class points, don't they? You're only supposed to get class points from, uh, uh, bosses, but I just noticed that, uh, all those encounters are actually giving me, uh, all those regular encounters are actually giving me, uh, class points. That's interesting. I, I didn't notice that. That's not too important, but that's interesting. So maybe a regular encounter just give me, uh, class points now. Interesting. How many people are even higher up in chain of command than Sheon? Like, she's the same posi- position in Vector as the person who developed the ship in the first place. So how is she unauthorized? Uh, government, methinks. Uh, my best guess is like, I, I guess like, uh, the government is just really like running the show behind the scenes. Which is kinda ridiculous to even, eh, think about in the first place, but I, I guess that's the, uh, answer we're going with. They're just like in charge of so many things that even their chief, uh, cannot like, uh, access these things, these secrets, black box secrets and whatnot. But that is kinda ridiculous. The only person that could have been above Sheon is like, maybe Kevin, and Kevin's dead, so I don't even know if that matters. And then maybe not even that. Okay, I don't think that therapy is gonna work this time. Yo. Yo, Alan Momo, yo, let's go. Alan got that terrible aim. Yo. Alan gaming. Let's go. Oh, let's go. Yeah, it's like a single amount of people higher ranked than She- than Sheon in Vector. I feel like that would just have to be like the entire, uh, like corporate bigwigs at that point. Of course, maybe even the people at the top of Vector aren't even in charge of Vector, you know? It could go even further than that, you know? They could think they're in charge of Vector and then they're not even like in charge of Vector, you know? How generous. We've detected Alberto's ascension. What, what is Wilhelm's voice again? It's like so lifeless, right? He sounds, he sounds like Mr. Burns, right? He's basically like the Mr. Burns of Xenosaga. Raise the hands of this. I see. He did well. The lock has been opened and the obstacle removed. The rest is up to her. Will matters proceed smoothly? Will matters proceed smoothly? She is suited for the task. There will be no problems. People always try to live a life of choices between good and evil. Like the title of the game! They make pessimism their foundation, then praise misfortune and sorrow, and then they try to seek a pure heart. Yet this is nothing more than their individual view born out of compassion with others. Comparison with others. Is she who thinks of others right? Is he who opened the door, wrong? Only those who stand in the place beyond that point can comprehend the true essence and gain knowledge of absolute truth. Her awakening, Cosmos' awakening, will lead us to that summit, don't you agree? This design is insane, like both of them, to be honest. In any case, the intermission is over, and the players stand upon the stage. All that remains is the way for the knight to appear. And for that, it is necessary that someone play the role of the villain. Will he suffice for that role? Do you object? The greater the suffering, the more exciting the drama. Too true, what a king, so relatable. Words to live by. Yo, Parsik? Yo, Shion and Alan about play some Parsik Star Allies, let's freaking go. Oh, y'all about to get obliterated. Oh wait, they might obliterate us, hold on. Oh, hold on. The fleet that's actually capable of doing something? Oh, na, na, na. Oh, we're getting kinda rocked. Ooh, let's go! Shion and Alan play some Parsik, the city of those that do it, so... Alan's like, Laguna's so good, Shion, you just don't get it. Ooh! Both of them's like, hey, guys. Oh, she got that glowy, oh, she got that glowy jello body. You know, I think the Orsella kinda holds it back a little bit, but, uh... If this was like another game's Orsella, that design would go pretty hard, I think. Also, they gave her a motorbike? Her bed doubles as a motorcycle. Stylish and practical. Oh, hell nah. Who better to hit Cosmos with than... I sleep in a big bed with my wife. Oh my, oh, Alan dying, bro. Well, Alan getting destroyed, bro. This is literally the episode of Evangelion. The like Shinji and Asuka are both in like the same, uh... Mech. The fleet that gets obliterated, and let's go! I'm sorry, Alan Gaming has been cancelled, I'm sorry. Bro, she just flew in? And then she did a T pose while flying in? Oh, nah, that's pretty cool. Does that blue eyes again for the... For like the second or third time? Every time Cosmos puts on the blue eye, she like obliterates everything. And she did, and she did! Damn, Cosmos really did transmit those eggs, yeah? That's making up for like all the, uh, times that we didn't use eggs in Episode 1. She was just building it up, she was charging it up. Every time Alan says something, I laugh. So we have like the three players set up with this mech now. Also, yeah, Cosmos really... Really rode a motorbike from an entire planet. To help out Shion. That's relationship goals for real, for real. Yo, am I gonna get on the Elsa again? That would actually be pretty tight. Matthews, it's hard to tell, yeah, Matthews, is that you? I can't tell if they changed your voice actor or not in this game. Oh, yo, I know this place! Hey, hey, oh, y'all kinda upgraded this place, oh my god, yo, ay, oh, ay, oh! Yo, we got the robots again? "The other day, the professor came to me and said, 'ES Sebulon contains functionality not present in any other ES.' According to the results of my supercomputer analysis, the ES Sebulon reacts to some of its pilot's ether skills, and allows them to be used even while piloting the ES. The ES spacecraft are truly mysterious machines.'" Oh, I guess so, characters... I guess certain characters can like, uh, use their ether abilities in the ES, that makes sense, I guess. Huh, they characters can be like, "That voice," all they want, but I gotta actually see the character version, yeah, for real. Yeah, they gotta keep like, uh, these dubbings consistent, me thinks. "Ah, we need periodic maintenance." "You wanna know where we get maintenance? In the Robo Foundry on B1." Yeah, y'all got your own, like, foundry, I guess? "Even if the steel body of mine is broken, they have facilities that can repair me quickly." Although, that's kinda like me. And like, you know, like the bar. Let's see, uh, well, let's take a look around, it actually looks quite different. I was completely expecting, completely expecting that it would just look exactly the same as like the... The, uh... Elsa in the first game. Although, you know what? No, I think that central area is the same as the fir... No, oh, you know what they did? It is the same, they just changed the camera angle, didn't they? It's literally just at a different camera angle. Uh, kind of, kind of. Eh, it's still pretty different. That still changes a lot, though. Yo, that sounds like a Nopon name in Xenoblade. Ah, wait, how does a robot sigh? Wait, how you do that, sir? "I envy the freedom you humans have. I wanna see the outside world one day, uh, go on Google Maps, it'll be great." "Get out of the way, don't wander around in tiny spaces like this." I'm so, oh my god! Wait, like I said, I'm sorry, and I just said, "I'm sorry," instinctively. Did I startle you? I was just trying to imitate humans. "No, no, bro, you don't boss me around, bro, what's your problem, bro?" "I apologize, I thought I was imitating how humans talk, but perhaps that was a rude way of speaking. I guess this is what happens when I base my speech patterns on the people aboard the ship." Oh yeah, like Tony and Matthews. Uh, should simply talk more like Chaos, me thinks. "More thieves have been targeting ship lately. Well, as long as I'm on the Elsa, it's smooth sailing. Not that the Elsa ever sails smoothly." "It's pretty low, even for scum like that to target docked ships. Did they steal your stuff, bro?" "Is that why y'all got that depth? Yo, y'all got Tetris, let's freaking go, Puyo Puyo would be cooler." Sai? What is Sai? Uh, that is simply something you can find out if you read the, uh... Uh, upper right corner of the stream, and if you don't understand the reference, uh, check out my, uh... Devil May Cry 3 special edition playthrough. "Is Chaos on this ship?" Well, he was originally on this ship, I guess he hasn't been here like in a little bit, but eh, you know, it counts. "There is currently no droid selected, canceling..." Bro, what? "Would you like me to explain this monitor?" Yeah, explain this Tetris to me, bro. "The monitor allows a visual examination of a droid's memory. However, the device requires a vast amount of power. The Elsa has a self-generating power system, but using this monitor requires cutting down all power to the rest of the ship. Therefore, Captain Matthews rarely scans our memory. We also have a self-analysis program. So unless there's severe malfunction, this monitor will not be used." Well, why would you even install it? That's stupid. That's dumb. It scans robots, but it takes all of the power to do, of the ship to do it? Uh, that's just dumb. Uh, that's dumb, me thinks. Yo, weaponry, yo, oh, this is a close, they don't got shops in this game. Oh, hell nah. If there's side quests, I'm not doing it on stream. That takes way too long. "K2 and I are thinking about opening up a shop on Elsa. However, because Captain Matthews is deeply in depth, he won't even look at the items that we are selling. So K2 and I wanna help the captain repay his depth and become rich." I'm just gonna tell you, Kamikaze, uh, that's not gonna happen. Uh, we, uh, do not have ship shops in this game, alright? "What do you think? Will you promise to help Captain Matthews repay his depth?" I don't think so, but I'm just gonna tell you, yes. Thank you for your support. Kamikaze? That's a terrible name for a robot OMG. Uh, he is simply very enthusiastic, okay? "Well, what you need to do is hand over any unnecessary items and accessories to K2, who will then hand them over to a buyer, and its whole amount of the captain's depth will decrease. Right now, the captain's depth is at a staggering amount. We're in for a long haul, but just keep at it." Yeah, I'm not gonna pay that back, bro, I'ma be real, bro. This is not like that Animal Crossing thing? "Oh, hello, I'm Cabrillo, the only female droid on the Elsa. Oh, you've got that crew thing, yes, the old man swimsuit." "What do you mean, Ziggy's?" Oh, is it, oh! So when I transferred my save data, I, uh... I got the swimsuit for Cosmos, and I got it for Ziggy? And... I got like another swimsuit that I can't put on any character? Who's the old man? "I heard the boss said the old man down below, but he's a lot more modest than he seems, so he doesn't wanna change in front of other people. If you wanted to wear him, talk to me." What the, who is this old man? Robot, oh! No! It's a swimsuit for him? That's dire! Yo, I love Pikmin 2, yeah, I love Animal Crossing, Pikmin 2, Tale of Zilia 2. Uh, hell nah! No, not you, bro, oh my god, what's your movement, bro? Your walk, oh, you got roller skates? Aw, no! This is that thing I was talking about the previous game, they like, they need to give like a super like anime music, like theme song. But now they actually did it, because they actually have music in this game, they have more than five songs in this game. No, nobody wants to see that, sorry, not sorry! Uh, we'll have to see. Ha, ha, ha! "Why am I here, you ask? He, 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 I can't tell you that just yet, but all will become clear in due time." If I had to answer, I'd just say, "It's tea time." He also has the tea, oh my god! This dude's insane! Oh, no! Where's your, where's the assistant Scott? There he is, bro, is it assistant Scott? Let's go! Is Alan coming by? I have a ton of things I wanna talk to him about. The professor sure likes that phrase, "tea time", but I'm pretty sure he means "showtime". I can't tell if he's doing it on purpose, or if he really doesn't know. He's such a hard man to figure out. And you know what's hard to figure out? Anything y'all do, ever. Aw, man. Okay, the professor has a little bit of rights, me thinks. Also, yeah, he got the healies, he got the graffiti, bro, he really on his, uh... Jetset radio encounter. Also, what happened to my Erde Kaiser? I worked so hard to build that Erde Kaiser in the first game, and I just don't have it anymore. Also, I did have to play Episode 1 for this. Hold on, let me, let me like, uh... Tear off the Band-Aid real quick. Hold on. Yeah, change his clothes. "The professor's saying change to his swimsuit." That's the worst phrase I've ever heard in my life. I've never heard in my life, hold on, let's just see it. He has the healies on in the swimsuit? That's like the beach, that's like California. Let's just turn off the Band-Aid and let's agree to never talk about it again, okay? Wait, that looks funny, wait. Wait, you got sandal healies? That's okay, alright. Oh, nevermind, you know what? I thought it was gonna be like the Alan swimsuit like the first game? It's alright, it's just a little bit funny. Wait, is that Erde Kaiser on his back? You know what? That's pretty raw, I'm not gonna lie. He got Erde Kaiser like beachwear? You know what? Eh, I'll leave it there for a little bit. Luffy? Luffy one beef! Oh my god, that is the Luffy fit, isn't it? Aw, hell nah, he's gonna be stuck in a thousand episodes trying to find the Erde Kaiser, bro. Aw, hell nah, bro, we're never getting Erde Kaiser. Oh my god, that is the Luffy fit, isn't it? Oh my god, okay. Eh, thank you so much, Bananako, for giving me like the funniest like, uh... Uh, Episode 1 save data transfer ever, oh my god. Alright, that was worth it, that was worth it. The swimsuit could have been very dire, but it was very, uh... Very fire instead. Wait, "tea time"? More like, "Time to destroy the tea on their table!" I didn't get to read it the first time, thank you so much for that message, Farinohoshi, that changed my life. "Danger ahead, we are currently headed for Old Milsha." Ah, hell nah. Well, I guess I'll talk to my friends first. Boom, boom, boom. Oh my god, we literally got the whole crew out here. "Captain, we owe you one." "Yo, looks like you're causing trouble like always." Aw, hell nah, they got McDonald's on the Elsa, bro, that's crazy! They got Senamio, and they got the McDonald's on the Elsa, let's freaking go, they got everything. Hold on, let me, uh... I'm gonna recap. Uh, because, uh, the cap was already off. So let me see. "Last time, last time on Awkward PSI-Z. Awkward was extremely thirsty, because he always is. Because people were mentioning, uh, Jude Coffey in Cardinals Discord. And next time." Oh, I dropped my cap! Hold on, I dropped the cap again, it happened again, it happened again. Oh, no! Damn it. Aw, I'm looking all over. I'm swiveling all around in my chair, oh, no! Y'all! Where'd it go? Give it back! Where'd it go? Okay, I'll find it in between breaks, but okay. There's your funny hydrate, hold on. Okay, I'll have to find the cap in between, uh... In between the break, but, uh... Alright, simply a funny turn of events, me thinks. Anyways, thank you for the hydrate on the, uh, aboard the McDonald's Elsa, very appreciated. Cap got dropped like Shion's combos, you hate to see it! Also, I'm just gonna point out, I like how they have to make the enemies weak to like thunder and her other element, thunder and beam, just so her combo would actually work in her own like, uh, solo portion of the game. Very funny, very funny prank. Oh my god. And also, yo, Cosmos with that fit, uh... It's not a perfect design, but I think that's pretty cool, I think. Uh, kinda cool, kinda cool. I kinda dig like the... Like the, what is it, like, Cortana from Halo vibe, kinda? Yeah, something kinda happened at First Division. Something? Yeah, I can't put into words very well, but I felt I had to go to Old Milsha. What? What? What's wrong, Captain? Representative Helmer asked us to go to Old Milsha too. I don't think there was anyone else crazy enough to just head there. Yeah, Helmer asked me to go there too. Besides, that's where the original Zohar is. Kanan and I have business on Old Milsha as well. Representative Helmer asked me to analyze Kanan's data. So everyone is headed for Old Milsha. Crazy how things just work out like that. Cosmos is amazing back there. Yeah, even I was surprised. But who is that enemy? It even dodged Cosmos' attack. I have a bad feeling about this. Yeah, I wonder about that myself. It's nothing. Alright, let me say something. Our next destination is Old Milsha, right? I can't say I'm looking forward to it, but it looks like we have to go. So let me know when you're ready to set out. Until then, go take a look, look around the newly remodeled Elsa. Yeah, y'all did spruce up the place. For real, for real. Oh, we got Jin and we got Kanan chilling out here. Very cool, me thinks. And then who are we having at my party? Oh, nobody. No, nobody is here. I can see that Jin in a second. And speaking of in a second, uh, I'm gonna go in and take a quick break. If anyone's got a dip, no worries, but otherwise I'll be back in just a second. Boom, like a boomerang, I'm back. I wish Yudi would max out this class already. It happens when it happens, you know? She goes at her own rate, alright? Well, eh, for me, it feels like, uh, her own rate is like, uh, me making her like learn every class where she has like a proficiency of D, so she takes forever to learn every class. But whatever. And oh my, oh my god, look at all these beautiful Judas in my, in my chat. We got Jude Coffey, Dragon Freak. Jude Think? That's crazy. I love it here. I love it here. I love it here so much. Boom, ba-dum. Anyways, speaking of loving it here. I have been farming for class points for the entire two hours of the stream. Are, are you just trying to like, uh, max out like, uh, most of your classes now? I've, I've, I've been like, uh, having to do that a little bit too, near the end. I found like a cave that's like pretty good to do that. Uh, and with food actually working, you know, eh, pretty, pretty, eh, goes, goes by pretty fast. I ain't gonna lie, I ain't gonna lie. Goes a lot faster than before. The mobile, that mobile weapon you were in seems to be an ES series, or ES reacted to it. There are two other ES crafts onboard the ship. They were all assigned here by Vector's CEO. I didn't think there were that many people that could pilot those things. And they probably aren't. Yes, wanna max that everything? Yeah, yeah, very fair to be honest. I don't like trying to max out everything, everything. Well, I'm like, I'm, I'm not gonna bother like, maxing out classes I'm not gonna use, but you know, it's still useful anyway. For sure and fun anyway. I told you time and again to think before you act. Oh, well, I'm just glad to see you're safe. So I assume you still intend to go to Old Milsha. I'm sure you have your reasons and since you're already here, I'm not going to tell you to leave, but please listen to me. Don't do anything foolish. Do you understand? I like how Xia just listening to all these people and, uh, just, just not saying anything back at all. What's up Hammer? Welcome back. This place is definitely livelier with you around. If I can get one or two classes maxed out per character every day, I think that would be a good pace, especially to keep up with DLC and whatnot. Hi, Junior. Yeah, they, they kinda like sped that up. I was surprised, I would kinda get hit with a little bit of whiplash, but like, when I, when I started this too, like Xia gave a recap and I've, of like, what happened? And I'm pretty sure part of that was saying that like, uh, someone recruited Jin to like explore like Old Milsha, I think. I, it might have been like Vector or, or something, or like somebody we know, but like, somebody like, like essentially hired Jin, I'm pretty sure. I think that's part of like, uh, I think some character dropped the, dropped Jin a visit. Uh, at some point this one as well. I think this is like following up on that point. And he was like the, the bald guy. It might have been that guy that sort of like dropped by, uh, Jin's house. But otherwise, basically Jin just here. Jin just here. Welcome back. I'm glad you're safe. I didn't think we ran into you out here. I'm sure you have your own reasons for being out here, but anyway, it's good to have you onboard. That was a pretty flashy entrance you guys made. I guess the fact that we ran into each other here means we're thinking the same thing. Too true. You're headed to Old Milsha, right? I'm surprised everyone like, uh, is kinda surprised to see me here, although that makes sense. I guess, uh, I sorta did my part of the venture. That enemy, what's that mobile weapon? I've never seen a human pilot move like that. You guys sure love getting into trouble. Uh, yes sir, yes sir. Uh, where, where, where's the, where's the girl? Where are the girls at? Where's that Momo? Where, where's Cozy at? Actually, is Momo here? I would assume so. I assume we kinda fixed everything with Momo. We can also teleport back. I'm not gonna bother with that right now, although I will save. Like I said, I'm probably just gonna do side quests, uh, off-stream, because like I said before, side quests are literally just like the most boring fetch quests you can think of. They're not that interesting, so I'm just gonna, uh, leave it for off-stream, I think. But they're still beneficial to you to, uh, do though. So I have to kinda find a balance. Uh, anyways, oh, I think I have to literally talk to Captain Matthews, yeah. Uh, I thought I could find, uh, Momo, but that's fine. We're just gonna progress, I think. Boom, ba-dum. Let's try talking to Captain Matthews again. See, where, where are you at? Yeah, there you go. Well, what do you think of the Elsa's new look? Beautiful, isn't she? There's no point in hanging around on the bridge the whole time. Why don't you have a look around? Or do you wanna head off for Old Milsha at to- at top speed right now? Uh, I mean, I don't think there's too much. Yeah, let's go to Old Milsha. Okay, you got it. Hey, Tony, you heard that, right? Hit it! I miss side quests already for real, yeah. Unfortunately, side quests just simply do not exist in, uh, Xenosaga. I did do quite a few, but they are literally like just so boring. They're not, they're literally not worth showing. They're just like fetch quests, like go talk to people in certain order. Yo, Matthews, your, your voice is like hella compressed. Oh, Cosmos is too. Wait. Wait, it's only a few characters. That's even weirder. This part of this, this got scratched. Maybe her Chromos are robbing quadruple down on it. It kinda works in a very bad way. Why are side quests so popular anyways? Where are the front quests and back quests? Exactly. So people really get it out here. I'm trying to hit up some of these back quests for real, for real. I even hit a diagonal. Like how Tony just decides to be important sometimes. Momo and Tony cooperation, let's go. Also, yeah, I, I don't know why, not only were like the voices like hella compressed in that scene, but like only certain characters had like hella compression. They were really struggling going from a DVD 9 to DVD 5. At least I think that's what the formats are called. Aw, nah, that's, that's, that's a double, that's a double Super Mario Galaxy black hole. That's a double too bad. That's a two-two bad bag. I think my force gyro is compressed to save all memory. My, my model was maybe way too many polygons. Anytime I load to a new area, it takes forever for me to load in. Anytime I stand up too quickly, and like my vision goes dark and whatnot, that, that's me loading it. I got too many polygons. Oh, nah, 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 nah. What is that? They're like some nasty flower base. Oh, nah, 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 nah. Oh, let's go to the crew. Okay, we're, we're a flat relevant ship, so they can't mess us up like the fleets, right? My man yelled. My man yelled for real. Ooh, damn, we all had to do is dodge. We, we also taking out some of them. Let's go. Don't worry about Amy for a moment. Me when I drop, uh, one of the weaker characters in, uh, Sonic Chronicles? Actually, no, she's pretty strong for whatever. I think, uh, I'm not gonna zup- zupulate over, zupulate over the Sonic Chronicles too, less too much. She's just out here standing. Xia is out here grasping for her lyocoma, just, just staring at her. Did that make a Sonic Chronicles tier legit for that comment? Put it, put it on Twitter. We'll let the masses, we'll let the masses decide. Who's the bad character in that game? Is it like Omega? There's some character like super cheeks, or is it like the, is it like the OC? Some, some character in that game like really sucks. I remember that. Okay then, that was a little rough, but we made it. There's no time to waste. Let's hurry up and get inside there and take it out. Nah, it's a pretty big fortress, so we'll take the ESs. Rouge, oh yeah, it's Rouge, I forgot. Yeah, she got like nothing. I don't even remember what you do with Rouge, honestly. Yeah, she got nothing. Alright, speaking of nothing. Are you alright? If it gets dangerous, come right back, okay? Don't do anything stupid. Uh, what about you, Tony? There is nothing we can do if the Elsa can't move. Hurry up and take care of this thing. Boom, ba-dum. What about you, Matthew? What are you doing? Don't, don't worry about things here. Go destroy that thing. Yes, sir. Oh, do I have my crew though? Oh, I do have my crew and I have Jin. Ooh, they actually leveled Jin. I wasn't expecting that. So he's level 31. Cool, cool, cool. Although he's gonna be really, yeah, he's gonna be really behind in, uh, in, uh, skills. Yeah, he's got like no skills, but, uh, uh, we'll make do. It shouldn't be that bad to catch him up though. Let's do this. Uh, boom, ba-dum. We can give him like one of those, uh, uh, skill upgrades. uh, skill upgrades in. I, I think it's worth it to give it to him. It won't be that bad. We'll give him like this, so catch him up at like five hundred, six hundred. Uh, yeah, we'll give him, we'll give all to him for now. It, it, it won't be perfect, but it shouldn't take that long to catch him up anyway. Anyways, let's do, uh, can I finish level one H? Not yet, although those skills are really good. Yeah, let's get, uh, swords on. And we'll, we'll, we'll run him for a little bit. Also, I don't, he's the only character where I don't have his, uh, yeah, I don't have his, uh, swimsuit ability yet. Which, uh, would be pretty good if I could get that at some point. Otherwise, I have everyone's, everyone else's. Yeah, he, he's literally gonna show up and he's just gonna be like, uh, he's just gonna, he's gonna be like, whoa, whoa, guys, why, why are y'all wearing swimsuits? Oh, did I miss something? Uh, switch out, uh, hold on. Let's switch out Xian. We'll put Ziggy in. And, uh, I think Momo's pretty good. Yeah, we'll run that for now. Uh, boom, ba-dum-bum. Actually, how are we doing on skills? Did they get anything? Uh, no, but they didn't really need to, so it's fine. Also, that, that she's pretty good to give, uh, Xian a solo segment to sort of catch her up a little bit. She's not like super far behind anyway, but you know, it helps anyway. Uh, boom, ba-dum-bum. I did get a lot of fun stuff on a lot of characters, but at the same time, I feel like it's almost kind of pointless because, uh, these are the way that, uh, battles are formatted that like, uh, you kind of just want like boost all the time. Boost and it just like get your burst damage. So it feels like the only like really important abilities are like abilities that, uh, pertain to, uh, like increasing your damage values really. Tier list, S plus banned uber tier list, cream. S tier, sonic shadow. A tier, shade, big. B tier, Amy, Omega, Tails, Knuckles, F tier, F tier Rouge. F tier Rouge. The very dishonorable title of, of F tier. Yeah, I, I agree with that, by the way. It goes from B, past C and D and presumably E, straight to A. Yeah, you forgot Zelda at the top, uh, sorry. Man, what's the alt code for that? Like, uh, dot that you always do? I'll put a random alt code. Okay, I, uh, yeah. Okay, I, I, I just, yo, y'all, y'all wait, y'all, y'all. I literally put a random alt code. I literally put in a random alt code. What do I get? The, the fucking. I, I, I get, I get that fucking Zohar. I, I literally put in a random alt code. I literally put in a random alt code. I, I swear, I, I just guessed it. It was like zero, one, zero, one, four, zero? Or no, no, that's, I put like zero, one, four, three or something? What, what, what is this? Oh, oh, I tried to send a message and it didn't, it just gave me an empty message on my end. I'm telling y'all, it's the Bible study. I'm telling y'all. The power of Bible study compelled you. I'm telling y'all. I'm telling y'all. Not, not, not even a joke. Not even, not even a prank that I set up. Just a, just a funny little coinkydink me thing. Oh my God, I, I, I love Xenosaga. Alright, let's give her Zecko Pocket. What do I want to do with Xian? Uh, any like passives? Passives are really good. Uh, just because, uh, being able to resist, uh, stats effects, uh, pretty cool IMO, IMO. I think I'll give her this. Yeah, I'll try to give her Aether Spear. I think she attacks with ether, so I think it'll be good. Anyways, this is how I feel about Korn firing the warriors. I genuinely think the gap between Rouge and the rest is that bad. I, I, I could see it. I could see it. For real, for real. I love learning like little bits and pieces about, uh, the warriors games, uh, just, just from the stream. It, it's a very fun experience. I do, I do, uh, I do genuinely mean that. Anyways, I guess I'll get her this. I, I don't think I'm gonna use it too much, but just to finish the, the class. Uh, she should have got some stuff, but I don't think I, I need it too much. Uh, does she have a level four? Not quite yet. Uh, I'll see. I'll see. Yeah, they, they only change the portraits when, uh, you get new characters, which is, uh, pretty neat. Alright, let's get a shmooven, I think. Boom, ba-dum-bum. The phrase, "It's bad, bad." You thought it was bad? No, it's dire. Uh, do I just leave through here? Do I talk to you? Uh, "Hanty, enemy mobile fortress on foot is dangerous. We will counterattack with mobile weapon crafts." Yep, so now we're using the, the, uh, ESs? Hmm, counterattack? Y'all, I, I love that song from Xenoblade Chronicles 2. Weren't we the ones who ran into them? Don't worry about it, alright? Don't worry about it. They gave Korn bad attack speed, AOE and damage. There's nothing in Korn's favor. Zelda sweep into Korn flop, for real, for real. I guess we're going here? Launch? Oh, let's go. I love feeling that strongly about characters in random games. I, I think it's funny just because it's like, uh, it's like, uh, it's not characters like exclusive to that game. It's like, uh, like spinoff games, you know? So, you know, like all this like Rouge and Korn slander, for real, for real. Simply deserved. Also, hey, now we got the, ooh, now, now we got like mech max. Ooh, here we go. So you got ES Asher, ES Zebulon and ES Dyna. Okay, cool, cool, cool. Can I switch the party around? Oh, I can. Uh... Oh, oh, oh. Ah, I see, I see. Oh, so the main, the main pilots are always Junior and Momo and Komos. And the co-pilots are always the rest of the characters. I see, I see. Well, we'll, we'll switch Xian for now. We'll put Jin in here. Oh, I can only have two mechs at a time. Interesting. Uh... Is that true? Yeah, I, I guess we saw the Asher before. Let, let's try this, yeah. Zebulon and Dyna. What does ether look like on these guys? Medica? I guess the list is determined by, uh, by the co-pilot, by the main pilots. Like Momo has Medica, so we can do Medica on this. But Junior and Komos doesn't have it. Actually, no, Komos should have Medica. Let me take a look at that. Real quick, yeah, she should have Medica. Yeah, she, she should have Medica. So is it, is it Ziggy? Oh, does Ziggy determine it? Oh, let me, let me try something. If I do this, does it? Do I have, uh, do I suddenly have a? No, okay, okay. I, I, I don't know what determines it. Okay. Um, maybe it just depends on the actual thing. Okay, that's fine. I'll, I'll figure it out at some point. Plus, Korn came and completes some missions. Regardless of your skill level, any missions that are like defeat two thousand enemies in eight missions are dire. I'm done now. Yeah, Korn should be more like me. I, I, I can defeat two dozen enemies in eight minutes. Uh, easy enough, bro. Well, also, oh my God, yeah, we actually just in mechs now. Oh my, I, I thought this mech had like, uh, its hands in its pockets, like perpetually at all times. Alright, uh, alright, it's pretty cool. We'll have to get used to combat like this, but, uh, I'm sure we'll figure it out. I'll, I'll make a new save, uh, just in case. I'll save on my Nintendo DS. Now I got the mechs. We have not fought with the mechs since literally the beginning of the game, but I'll, at the same time, uh, it has also not been that long of adventure so far. It is this, it is part four and we got to this too, so this two of two, so eh, not that crazy, but we'll see. Interesting though. I like that music so far. Ah, it gave me, hey, stinky, yeah, dummy. Although we only get two party members, I guess. Huge amounts of health. Let's see, uh... So what can we even do? We can do specials. Yeah, we can do specials. Uh, yeah, so we have like AOE. This is where we get like AOE's. Uh, stalk either special move. Okay, so let's do, uh, what does it look like? AOE? Yeah, light him up. Uh, oh, yeah, oh, that barely like just didn't kill that one. See, and then, uh, oh, this one only has a single target attacks. That's fine. Uh, boom, ba-dum-bum. Okay, go ahead and attack. Oh, shit, the weak one. One was like almost dead. Oh, wait, can I not restore the health on these guys? Like eggs? Are we not worried about that? Gonna do this. Easy, critical. Let me see. Yeah, you have to worry about health. The mechs look pretty cool though. I ain't gonna lie. Hmm, I don't even get, uh, points for it. I just get experience. Okay. Let me see. So can I heal in between fights? Okay, yeah, yeah, okay, I can. It's, it's not like eggs where it's like super limited. I can just do it whenever I want. Okay, cool, cool, cool. Very good information. Uh, much more powerful than eggs, we thinks. Eggs, uh, a little bit easy to crack, you know, a little bit easy to crack open. These ones are nice and sturdy. I guess because we're not fighting noses. We're fighting like, uh, goodies. Let's see, uh... Although is there anything we can do? Yeah, we can stalk, yeah. We probably just want to stalk just like usual. Literally just like the same setup as usual. Also, I probably want to see like, uh, how they attack because this one probably attacks, uh, like with ether attack maybe? Let's see, ether, uh, yeah, I can literally do like all of this. It's still. Yeah, it still fights like normal. Okay. That's good, that's good. I can employ my usual tactics. Do I have analyze? Yes, I do. Okay, so it's borrowing like the ether skills from some character. Probably the main pilot. Because I have like all my, uh, all my ether abilities on me, which is good. Let's see, uh, weak versus physical aura, slash and strength on the, on that guy. So aura would be pretty good. Let's do, oh, this guy can't do ether. Oh, he has no ether points. I see, that's why. Uh, that would explain quite a bit. Uh, let's do... Eh, just stalk again. Oh, stalk only builds the beater. I forgot. We can, we don't actually have like proper stalking. I forgot about that. Uh, it'll be fine. Uh, do this. Do this. It's not like we're borrows. Oh, you better not cancel my turn. Oh, let's go. Also, I gotta say, uh, mechanic I don't like about this game, uh, like the random like roulette, uh, slot. Because when you, because with the random roulette slot, it's like, uh, it could be nothing or boosted ether effects or, uh, canceling someone's turn if they get attacked. Or like a reverse where like you get your turn if you get attacked, which applies to enemies as well. So it's, it's really annoying. I don't like the, uh, the four slot. The random, sorry. The random slots like really like annoying to deal with. Feels like the enemies can do it a way, can u- utilize it like, uh, way more effectively than me. So you can just, you should just gamble, gamble harder. The problem is you, you literally can't, you, you literally don't know what it's gonna be. I, I love the idea of like random effects. Oh, I just went backwards, right? Well, I guess I'll take the heal, I guess. Man, I hate it here. But like, it sounded fun in theory when I first heard about it, but after that, it just did not sound good. Feels like, uh, you can, you can use it so little compared to like how much it gets used, it gets used against you. It's like, it's not even worth it. Can I run to encounters? Out of curiosity. Oh, I can. Oh, they just did. They, they, they didn't say nothing. They're like, yeah, I'm, I'm out of here. I, I don't, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna be in this situation right now. Oh, but I have to fight. Because I have to, oh, man. You have to fight. I hate it here. I'm trying to play this game like it's a visual novel. Man, whatever. Uh, ch-ch-chu, just do this. I just, just beat it up a bunch. So I kind of figured out combat on foot, uh, and now I have to figure out combat like in the mechs. I can, I have to figure out like, uh, what's actually like decent. Uh, I, I'm not sure if that's a good answer right now. I guess my options are more limited, so I probably just want to like, uh, sort of make do what I can do. Uh, can that guy like, uh, hit? Yeah, he has a gun as well. Definitely. Feels pretty simple though. Just do like basic attacks. Having less party members means there's like, uh, less diversity in the builds per se, but it should be fine. Kind of bummed you don't have like all three mechs all at once. Although I guess that's just how they balance it. Don't let them escape. Oh, brother, they, they got Eisen, brother. They, they hired Eisen in there. Alright, we're good. Yeah, I simply will escape, alright? Well, I'm not gonna escape because I, I literally need to like, uh, fight you, but I'm still gonna escape. The encounter, me thinks. Uh, boom, ba-dum-bum. Damn. Oh, crit, let's go. Nice crit. Although I guess, uh, oh yeah, points don't matter either. You don't want the multiplier. Yeah, the multiplier is useless because, uh, you don't get points, you don't get skill points in these battles. Just a foot. Me when I'm a random enemy character, no escape, yeah. Uh, that was Eisen that one fight. Yeah, Eisen is a V, bro. Uh, they, they were enemies encountering me, bro. They forced me to a situation I did not want to be in. Okay, yeah, this messed me up. This, uh, three-way like, uh, corridor. Eh, i- i- if y'all are gonna make me walk through, oh, nah, nah, nah. If y'all are gonna make me walk through hallways at a snail's pace? Yeah, yeah, y'all gotta make it faster. Stop! Stop right there. I'm begging you, stop. Okay, uh, what, what do I even want to do here? Uh, I probably want to do like, uh, let's do, uh, boom, ba-dum-bum, Aether Spear? Oh no, the eggs de- de-level compared to us on foot. Oh wait, did they? Hold on, I gotta, I gotta see, I gotta see this. Also, why can't I use ether on this guy? That's kind of annoying, me thinks. Uh, stalk. Leave in the stock market. We just want to stalk with these guys too. That, that might be the strat anyway. Boom, ba-dum-bum, die. Stalk again. Do the two hundred attack. Let's see how that looks. Oh, rude. Let's see, uh, beat up, uh, this one. Okay, I don't think that buff I did was very useful. Uh, what does this look like? Meteor storm. Oh, he got obliterated. That's like all his health. Yep. Well, that's probably worth it. Bam, see you. Oh, uh, sorry. Uh, now, now see, uh, you have now been seen to the door. See you. Uh, Eisen got obliterated. I'm, I'm, I'm so sorry, mister, uh, Eisen no last name. You hate to see it. Yeah, I guess I kind of got a last name a little bit. Uh, let's do medical on the crew. Yep. Yeah, I don't know what determines the, uh, ether abilities, but it should be fine enough. There we go. Just a few whacks. Mech combat looks not dire, but it doesn't look super interesting right now. Although maybe I just have to figure it out. Because I don't have as many options. I, I just don't have as many options. Maybe I have to like upgrade my abilities or something. But then I don't have shops to upgrade like, to like change my parts or anything, so I don't know. Oh, I got surrounded. Yeah, I guess I should like try to surround the enemy as well. Let's see, do that. What about this? Oh, nah, nope. Either so far it just seems like I kind of want to hit and I hit him again, you know, uh, that's kind of it. Like find the best button to hit and then press it many times. It's cool to fight in mechs, but, uh, I just kind of want more options. Oh, oh, shoot, wait. Yeah, wait. Oh yeah, the, the mechs are weak as hell. Oh yeah, the me- why, why are the mechs way weaker than us? Uh, hell no. I wonder what determines that. I bet it's the level of the Asher at the beginning of the game. That, that's my prediction. That's what determines it. See, oh yeah, I'll light up, light everything up. Although, where am I going? Although, I'm, I'm going this way. Also, let, let, let me walk around with this one. I'm just curious. Oh, this one also floats. Boom, ba-dum-bum, get rid of that. Oh my God, what is this dungeon? What is this dungeon design? It's literally just platforms. What is this? The Asher really got completely unused for the entire game until this moment to shine. Yeah, just to do like a basic attack to basic attack. Real crazy, for real. That's crazy. Absolutely phenomenal. Oh, I, I'll get my ass beat. Let's see, uh, stalk. Uh, eh, I, I can't do, I can't do ether on this. Uh, just, just hit it. I'll try to get lucky with crits, I guess. Uh, well, I guess I want to boost a little bit. Although they're not even messing me up. And since I can use, uh, I guess I should check out my items. But I presumably can use items like, uh, just fine. Oh, he's still in a die. Dire, dire. Uh, boom, boom. Do that. And then boost again. Oh, but bro, give him my turn, buddy. Yeah, yeah, bro, give him my turn. Let's see, uh, stalk again. And then kill that one in the middle. See you, Malcolm. This is a little slow, but it'll be fine. Do this one. Oops, I, oh man, I missed input. I hate it here. Well, it's fine. Let's see, like boost, uh, do, uh, what does that look like? Oh, the arms, bro. Hit it with the arms, bro. You hate to see it. Uh, do this one. One of the few AOE's. Also, I didn't like show it off, but, uh, Cosmos actually has like, uh, some special attacks on her. They include some AOE's, which actually seem pretty useful. Not the greatest, but considering that, uh, uh, most characters like lost all their AOE's, uh, after returning, uh, from proto Mercaba, uh, the few AOE's that we have available to us could be very useful in the future, me thinks. Let's see, uh, where am I going? I'm just kind of out here. I, I'm trying to make progress, but I don't see many places to go. I'm not gonna lie, this, this, uh, dungeon design look a little bit dire, me thinks. Uh, maybe I should just get in and get out, like the movie. Bum-bum-bum. Oh, there's definitely a chest like, uh, behind, uh, that guy. Hold on. Hold on, hold on, no, let me, let me hit that guy. There's no escape! There's no escape! Stop trying to escape, there's no escape! No escape, no escape! Bro, who are these dudes? Who are these fools? Bum-bum-bum. Also, the AOE only costs 100 points on this thing, which is pretty useful. Also, it also means the strat is literally just, just, just to, dude, just stock all over again. That's literally the point of the game. Bro, this, this, this is Eisen's world, bro. I'm, I'm just out here living in it, bro. Against my will. Not because I despise Eisen, but because, uh, uh, I have to, uh, engage in competition against him for the coercion capital. Oh, hell nah! Oh, hell nah, I really don't got stock. The market is dire right now. You wanna do ether? Eh, I guess. See you, bro. Yeah, once again, I can just like heal in between fights and like... Doesn't seem like a resource management is too much of an issue because I can just like, uh, I have plenty of items. Uh, considering the situation, so I don't really get like a what I'm getting tested on right now. Uh, but whatever. I guess no struggling is better than lots of struggling. Uh, let's, let's see, uh, yes, I can't use, uh, the med kits, but I have to use these. Okay, yeah, they have their own items. Oh, but I can't, oh, I can't restore ether, oh, I guess that's the issue. Also, the Zebulon can al- can only u- oh, only the Zebulon can use ether. Because none of my, only the Zebulon has ether points. Uh, that is dire. That is, that is dire. Oh wait, is it Momo? Is it because it's Momo? Out of curiosity. Oh, 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 Momo is tied to the, uh, oh, Momo herself is tied to the Zebulon. Okay, so Momo determines the abilities of the Zebulon, which is really important for her. Okay, okay, I see. I, I kinda get it then. But also means I have like no options. Wha- what do I do? Because like only one of my mechs can do ether. And I don't have that many abilities or whatnot, so what, what does mech combat look like? Is my question. Also, I 100% thought there was gonna be a chest like right here. Uh, they betrayed me. Uh, I hate it here. Takahashi, you hack. Bum-bum-bum. So they, they really got above the movement speed of this game, for real. Also, who wants to bet this is just like a ludicrously like long dungeon? Oh, what was going on with the music there? Oh my god. That was trippy as hell. Ta, yeah, takahashi, yeah, takahashi, for real, for real. Yeah, y'all get it, y'all get it. Oh, I got some nano repairs, that's pretty good. Bum-bum-bum. I take it back, I take it back. So yeah, let me pick that up, oh, nano repair A, oh, deli seals, I think that one's, uh, stronger. Bum-bum-bum. Nanos, oh! That's like a biosphere for the, these parts, that's pretty good. Nano repair A. And a safe point, delicious. And take it. Bum-bum-bum. Just better say like, "Final room." Oh no, it says interior. Nah, no repair A. To proceed further, you must activate the elevator. The activation switch is? Maybe that, what do you mean maybe that? It, it better be that. What do you mean maybe? Get me up there! How many parts are we gonna even have in these, like? Uh, that is simply something that we will have to look forward to. Also, how do I get up there? I guess there's a door? Uh, I guess I gotta drop down. Uh... Uh, do I just? Uh... Okay, I, I guess I just come in from the right, I guess. Unreliable narrative, let's freaking go, I love it here, uh, that's why we watch the stream. And look forward to cast. Hold on. Yeah, I feel like that's gotta be emo at this point, yeah. Hold on. Alright. That, that might have to be an emo. Oh my god. Oh my god, that, that's funny. Oh my god. He, he, he's so pissed off, he's so pissed off. Chaos in this is, uh, X, uh, unspecified numbers of years. Oh my god, hold on. Where'd I go here? Eh, oh, bro, Eisen, please tell me where to go, please. I'm begging ya! Also, I have to fight these guys because like, uh, otherwise I just have like no, uh, I can't like move past them. Literally no escape. Uh, bum-bum-bum. Stock, I guess. I guess I'll just like stock always. Bum-bum, and then, uh, eh... Rain arrow! He looks like he's had it. He looks so mad, I don't know why. What did they do to him? They, they, they made a... Specifically the fact that like, he's the type of guy that's like very difficult to make mad, you know? It's like, how'd they do it, you know? Who did that to him? Well, why, why'd they do it to, why'd they do that to him? He's a homeboy. Oh man, why'd they get the robot a butt? I mean, a happy butt, you know? It's so curved, too. Okay, is this a chest, bro? What's, what's the point? What, what, what's the point? Oh, no! Episode 2, what are you doing, baby? This is not it, baby? Oh, no! Hold on. Where do I go here? Bro, there better not be no like ether address, I mean ether, I mean segment address. Okay, let's see. Bum-bum-bum. Charge recor- wait, what is, what is charge recovery? That might be a, an accessory, hold on. Bum-bum, uh... In here? Oh, I have plenty of accessories, hold on. Uh, increase physical defense, increase ether defense. Well, if they're like, if they're like, okay, this one has like really low defense, we'll do that. Yeah, this is Momo, so this is really important. Ether defense, lower speed defense. Recur 5% of max HP. Double duration of status effects. Sure. And we'll give this one, uh... Yeah, we'll give this one ether defense. Oh, that one already has something. We'll do that, that. Uh, we can also give it here. And here, cool, cool, cool. Awesome, we have a lot of accessories then. I will do my best to show off the robot butt. Uh, the camera has to kinda cooperate with me, but don't worry, I, 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 I'm always trying to show off robot butt. Uh, I use Cosmos after all. Bum-bum-bum, bada-bada-bing, bada-boom, I am taken off the platform. Bum-bum. Anyways, I use Ziggy as well. Equality, you know, I, I keep it equal in here, TM. Anyway, they're trying to find like a new, uh, entrance, but like, uh, okay, maybe here, maybe here. There, there, there they are, no escape, no escape! Eh, don't, don't even try to escape! It's not gonna be in your favor, don't escape, don't escape! Oh my, oh, they, they already trying to attack me immediately, bro. Stock! And do the, the stock ability. And I'm gonna do my turn, and I'm gonna do, uh, ether, oh, no, 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 I'm gonna do special, rain out! Bum-bum, easy! The numbers are just so inconsistent in this game. Which is kind of annoying. Because like sometimes you do like a lot of damage, sometimes you don't, and then crit like really modifies the damage as well. It's kind of annoying, honestly. It's a little too much of a, like a range, which is funny, but also kind of a weird to deal with. I don't like RNG! Everything should be the same every single time. And that's peak game design. No variety. Just the same all the time. Is there really no door here? Or, or, bro, what are these pranks that episode 2 is trying to pull on me? For real. What is this? A G, G slow guard? Bro, eh, 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 why, why would they say that about him? Let's see, uh, bum-bum-bum. Oop, eh, sta- oh, oh, oops. Status, uh, slow resist, um, just put it there, that's fine. Bum-bum-bum, wait, wait, or, wait, wait, Cosmos and, wait, Cosmos and Ziggy are both in the, in like the, the, the ES with the huge butt. That, that, that's true equality. They, they teamed up to give that, that ES Dina the, the biggest butt ever. That, that's equality, oh my god. Oh my god, that, that, that's lesbian gay solidarity right there. Oh my god. How poetic. Speaking of poetic, where's my door? Where's my progress? Wait, where do I go? Did I miss something? Did I? Wait, did I miss something like dire, dire? If I can't, if I can't like, uh... Wait, if, wait, wait, I fully explored, okay. I, I have to, okay, I have to go somewhere else, I have to go somewhere else. I, I have to go somewhere else, I, 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 I can't go here. You, you already know, the Dina Super Grand. Yeah, eh, eh, there's too much mass in there, you know? Oh, no! The inside the SS Dina, it's just like that meme of like the, the, that, that guy and the girl. They're like in the, they're like, you know, like they're, they're both sitting in the car, but like the, the guy has like a huge chest, and the woman also has like a huge chest, that, that's Cosmos and Ziggy in the, that's Cosmos and Ziggy in the SS Dina. Oh my god. Oh, I might have to get that commission. We're gonna have to move their leg space, but there was in the way. Oh my god, it is simply a dire situation in there. Oh, what is this? Speaking of dire, what is this? Oh, these, these are like puzzles. What is this place? Oh, oh, not, 1, 2, 3, 4, oh my god, what is this? Oh, nah, nah, nah. What is, what, oh, eh, 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 y'all, y'all gave me a combat arena that became a puzzle, what is, okay, can't interact with that. Okay. Oh, there's like, uh, symbols, okay. So 2 on that. 3 on here. Okay, so the order is like, 2, 1... What is this? Yeah, yeah, show me this camera angle. Yeah, 2, 1, 2, 3, right? I think that's what it is, yeah, 2, 1, 2, 3, I need to probably match it by destroying things, okay? Eh, simple enough. Also, you move so slow. Let's see, uh... What, oh! Oh, I'm just rotating it, okay, okay. They just wanna fill it? Is that all I wanna do? Or do I wanna match it? Okay, I, I got it. Okay. Just hit it a bunch and you will solve the puzzle eventually. 5, 4, 7, 1, 2, got it! Nice to know y'all got the agenda. The heart's there. Okay, bum... Wait, wha- what is the puzzle element here? Is that good? Oh wait, it has like a, a slot that enters something. Interesting. Okay, I'm, uh, missing something here. Okay, let's try to light it up first, if it doesn't do anything, I'll, I'll, I'll do it the other way. Does that do anything? Uh, nope. Because now they're all facing away, maybe I don't wanna do that. Or, does that change anything, uh, in the previous, like, screen? Wait, wait, what is this? Wait. Eh, I probably don't wanna make it like all the same, that's probably not the solution. I'm gonna give it a little bit, otherwise I got Mr. Game FAQ, uh, on deck. Like, what, what am I doing here? Maybe this is not a room? With something? Is that like lines up? Can I interact with it when it's like that? Make sure we, uh, approach this from every angle possible before we, uh, concede, but... Which means, give it like 1 minute before I just give up. What do I do? Like, wha- 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 This, this look, wha- wha- why does this game give me like the most dire puzzles all of a sudden? I'm 1-1 in puzzle right now. I mean, I, I'm 4, I'm 4-0 in puzzle right now. I'm about to be 4-1. What is? I don't, I don't get it. No, I, I don't like it. I don't get it. This makes me feel, I, I hate feeling dumb. This makes me feel dumb. Wha- 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 wait, wha- So that one lights up? On that side, and then? I can rotate it, and then it's like that? Wait, wha- Wha- what is? Wha- what is? Hold on, does it reset if I, wait? Wait, wha- This really is the puzzle stream now. They, they, they are really trying to... They are really trying to prevent the progress, me thinks. What is this? Also, third dungeon in the same stream, woo-hoo! Overachieving today, I, I, I'm telling y'all. I, I always aim to deliver, speaking of deliver, please deliver me from this puzzle, wo- Oh my, wha- wha- Okay, so reset it, but what does that do? They just wanna... They just wanna like make it all the same? 3, wait, the, the numbers have to matter, right? Like, do I just match the number? Uh, is, is that literally it? 1... Not like that. 2... A 3... Is that what I'm doing? No! Mm, Mr. FAQ, y'all, y'all, I, I, I am literally flabbergasted, I don't know what to do. Wait, what is this? Yo, what is this? Wha- Okay... Oh, 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 man, man, oh, okay, 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 I literally tried this, I just did it the wrong way, okay? You're literally just trying to do that. That, that's all you're trying to do. That's so dumb. Okay, okay, you just wanna make it a line like this. Wha- what is this? Yo, Drew looking away? Eh, yeah, yeah, don't, don't see this, Drew. Yeah, don't, don't see this right now. This is not my finest hour. Yeah, okay, do that, and then, uh... Woo-hoo, Puzzle Gaming! Yeah, call me Professor Layton because I be cheating. Okay, that, that's not even fun, though. It's not even a puzzle. That's why we just arrange it. This is the type of puzzle I give people in my mansion, you know, to like, you know, to like, uh, open the bathroom or something, you know? Rotate the statues that they, they face northeast, west and south. That wasn't even, that, that's stupid! That's dumb! That's stupid, I hate it here. Uh, Chris knew what to do, though, for sure, for sure. I, I believe that, I believe that. Man, episode 2 getting on my nerves, a little bit, me thinks. Really getting on my nerves for like the remaining like 1 hour and 42 minutes of episode 1 that's left, apparently. I mean, episode 2. Use the elevator, sure. So then I still have to like loop back and like hit the switch, is the thing. So I take the elevator, the other elevator in the other, in the room with the safe point. So what's going on here? Also, I feel like this is just like the halfway point or so. Oh, no! If it's gonna be another puzzle, then that might be a dire situation. Although, I think we're in the right place. Yep, we're here. Oh, what is this? Oh, oh, no! Oh, no! Exit the ES, ooh, wha- wha- why are we exiting? Oh, okay, okay, we're docked, okay? I, I guess we gotta continue on foot, okay? Cool, cool, cool. I guess we're here now, I just gotta head back. Oh my, I guess it's like a big, big dungeon, I gotta do stuff on foot and do stuff on, uh, on the ground, okay, okay. I can rock with that. And I get to actually like use my party properly. And I, and I already got the full party like, uh, pretty early on. Oh my god, am I only getting on foot to do puzzles? I hate it, I hate it. What is this? Oh, this is where I was. Yeah, I need to do that. Oh, these are too big to destroy, though. Uh, that should be fine, right? Wait, did I literally, did I literally get off the ES just to hit a button? Is that all I did? Zeno's song is so funny. Zeno's song just pulls so many pranks. What was the point of that? Wait. Wait. Oh my god, I'm losing my mind! Is that it? I don't think I could do anything else there. Hold on, I'm looking at the, hold on, I'm looking at the guy, is that literally all I do there? Wait, wait a minute. Oh my god, that's literally all I do there. They literally... They, they did the worst, they did the worst in both worlds. They, they made complex puzzles that were just like hitting switches, and then they made just a long, a bunch of long hallways, and then they made me hit switches just to head back to the previous area. After I hit the switch, this is dire, this is dire! Zeno's song is silly, but was literally combining all the most dire elements. Except you didn't make the power buff growth, you made like the, you didn't even make the rowdy roof boys. You made, you made a Zeno's song, an episode 2 dungeon. Oh, no! Okay, so I head back now. And then I go here, very funny prank. I don't have to fight the enemies again, right? Well, at least I, oh, I cleared it out, okay? Uh, fair enough, I guess. And I, okay, so now I go, what's the point? Oh my, I, I, I went from peeved off to pissed off. I'm pissed off right now. I'm mad, I'm mad, I'm... Why did they make me dismount too? What was the point of that? Why was there even a safe point? Why was there a safe point there? Oh no. Okay, I'll, I'll save again, I guess. Oh my god. Xenosaga, what are you doing? Okay, here we go. Let's go. Here we go. Here we go. Let's go. Los, so, oh, oh. Oh, phew. Okay, I guess I can navigate there. Do I want to head back? Do, do I want to head back? No, I, I don't care. I don't care if they got Erde Kaiser. I'm not walking back. All right, it's fine. It's nothing. It'll be fine. No, this is not the robot with the boy. No way. Bro, oh, is this dude again, bro? Oh, not him. It's him. Why, why is Richard sound so lame? I've grown weary of these encounters. I've had enough of you. Richard, you need a nap, bro. Oh, it's his, it's his boyfriend too. Scutum or whatever his name is, bro. All right. Okay, let's see, uh. I probably should have reviewed my abilities, but I think I'll be fine. It'll be fine. Ooh, wait, hold up. Yeah, do, wait, can, can I like, uh, can I like, uh, put them in that weird loop again? Like I did before? Okay, let's see. First off, let's analyze. This is gonna be really annoying because only, only Momo's mech can use like, uh, ether abilities. I can only do like interesting stuff on Momo. Okay, we have to pierce and what is ST? Wait, what's ST? Here, wait, it's not slash, is it? No, I don't have ST. What's ST? Wait, wait, pierce and ST? Straight, what? I've had enough of you. Stun? Do I have? There, there is a stun, but I, I didn't think there was like an attribute. Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll see. Yeah, I don't have a- Do you have an ST? No, I don't think I have an ST. Well, I, I don't know what that is. May, maybe stun. I don't have the ability to stun either. Analyze that guy as well. His boyfriend. I don't think about a boom. Oh, they also have, oh, I must have to steal a bunch too, aren't I? Hmm, well, I don't have to, but it would be useful. Man, only, only Momo's can steal. All right, that's gonna be dire. All right, go to stock. Spend some, uh, boost. Psycho pocket, yeah. Mystic powers, give me your pockets. On this guy. Been pretty lucky on the steal so far. It's always been like, uh, the first item and the rare item. Or sometimes even the rare item immediately. Might have to be a little, I have to be careful though. Okay, let's see, let's try, uh. Also can't break like, uh, big guys. I don't really get the point. Uh, it'll be fine though. Do I just want to do big attacks? Like, I guess. Give me your pockets. Uh, psycho pocket. Yeah, if I can't get chops in this game, uh, I'm just gonna have to steal a bunch. Couldn't steal anything. Well, he still has another thing. Momo might be here just to steal. Oh, defense attribute change? Are you kidding me? Hold on now, hold on now. Uh, wait, that, that might not be that good. Uh, steal from Richard, bro. Give me your pockets, Richard. Anti-thunder armor. He probably has like another item. Honestly, didn't look at his items, but I just, I just kind of guessed it. Is that AoE? You hate to see it. Uh, stock again. Uh, give me your pockets. Try a little bit more. Although it's still a chance. Couldn't steal anything. I, there's, you have, you have more for sure. I'll try a little bit more, but otherwise I'm just gonna fight. He's also gonna get my ass beat a little bit. Let's see, okay, uh. Go ahead and do, ooh, this is not a good turn to attack as a thing, but it'll be fine. It shouldn't be that dire. Uh, beat him up. Beat this. Oh, he evaded, bro. Oh no. Medic all real quick. Na, na, na. That's not what I wanted to hear. Oh, medic doesn't heal that much. Hold up. This is kind of, hold up, this, this, hold up, hold up, wait, this might be kind of, hold on, this might be kind of dire. Let me do another, hmm, do another psycho pocket. Give me, give me your pockets. I can do items if it's like, wait, can I do items? No, I can't. I, I can't do anything in this mech. Hold up. Uh, do medic all just in case. And they have so much boost too. It's gonna be really scary if they like cash it in. Uh, stock. Yeah, I got no boost to work with. I might want to actually like buff my friend here. That can actually like do some stuff. Uh, do attacker. Yeah, do like, uh. Yeah, attacker. Oh, I can only do it on myself. Oops. I could do it on someone else. Okay, that's fine. Uh. Ooh, and this is like really dire to be honest. Uh, lower. I want to break, I want to like break something here. Break his, uh, yeah, break his armor, yeah. Richard, goodbye to your armor. See you. Yeah, hold this, uh, hold this L as in this L like, uh, status effect. Uh, bum, bum, bum. Special, eat that. I landed one attack in this fight. Everybody's been like stealing someone's, uh, pockets so far. I actually can't find anything with ST me itself. I appreciate it. Uh, it is simply another funny prank that Xenosaga likes to pull on, on its players, you know? Uh, I need to stock a little bit so I can like regen a little bit. Uh, stock. Man, I just have like no options. I really can't do too much. Can you keep up? Well, it, yes, yes, I can actually. I keep doing this and, uh, you always get pissed off. Wait, did you refresh and it didn't like even take it away? Bro, you suck. I did that because I thought it went away. No, but it literally didn't even go away. Let's see, uh, stocks. And then, uh, I'll try stealing pockets a little bit more. Although this is gonna be like the last chance. Maybe? Oh, I got it. Okay, cool, cool, cool. I got three or four. Although I have no EP now, so this is gonna be really bad. It's gonna be really, really bad. Oh, I actually did a lot of damage. You. Uh, do special meteor storm. Ooh, high crit, okay. There seems to be something wrong with Richard. Oh my, I just, this is just a phrase. Yeah, there's something wrong with this dude, bro. Absorb half of Richard's damage? Bro, what is this? Hero's shield, bro. Nothing heroic about defending Richard. They're saying there's something wrong. Madness overcomes Richard. Oh my god, for Richard's out of, out of his mind, bro. Oh my god. Oh my god, that's insane. I love it here. Yeah, this is a good thing. Yeah, like, like like Albedo's messages to madness overcomes Richard. There seems to be something wrong with Richard, bro. Oh my god. Kid's named Richard. Yeah, kid's named Richard. That's not even the Richard anymore. Yeah, bro. It's so true. Oh my god. Oh my, there, there's something wrong with this man for real. Oh my god, who's this? Oh my god. It makes no sense. It feels like an out of context Twitter account. I guess I'll just keep doing medic us, but I, I probably want to push that a little bit here. Uh, lower. Oh wait, does, does he still have the, the def? Yeah, do this. I don't, I don't like mech combat. You can't do too much. Wait, what is this? Oh, he hit me with. What is that? He made a black hole. What is this? Well, can I move? Oh, I can't. Uh. Oops, I messed, oh, misinput. Very bad misinput, me thinks. Wait, he did something to me. I can't, oh, I, I don't have EP. Oops. Well, let's do, uh. Uh, get, well, get, get rid of him, yeah. I need Richard out of here. I've had enough of Richard's games for real. That's it. Tales of Graces is not, not as good as people think it is, to be honest. TBH. And the gun lane, yeah, for real. That, that came from the heavens, bro. Oh my god. Fine, Ray. Yo, me when I finally just agreed Ray to shut him up. Oh no. Okay, I need to kill him like right, he, Richard needs to die. I'll, I'll be, Richard needs to die right now. Richard needs to die immediately. Ra- rockets dance madness? What is these? Okay, medic at two. I- immediately. I spent way too long trying to, trying to clear Richard's pockets. I'm gonna have to try and get lucky with like, uh, yeah, I'm just gonna have to attack him right now. Uh, sparrow fist. I think I don't have his second item, but that's fine. We're okay. Uh, special. Yeah, do this. Oh, and no damage. Okay, I just need to try and hit him. Ooh, that, wait, that is a lot of damage. Hold on, I'm just gonna do that. Oh, he died. Oh, he died. I'm pretty sure I got his two items, uh, so I'm not gonna stress too much. Go, go ahead and hit him. See, it would be nice to get like the, the ether up. Uh, when it's Momo's turn to get the super healing, but the problem is you can't set it up. So like, uh, I don't, I don't really get like how they expect you to do it. Like here? Oh, oh, I got it. Okay, I got lucky. It's that easy. See, like you get manipulated sometimes, but it's not very consistent. Yes, we got a little bit more healing. Oh my god, bro. Although we might die. Hold up. I, I'm probably just gonna switch out. Uh, that, that probably makes more sense. I do this. What does it look like? Oh, ST is strike. That, that's what it is. It's strike. I see, I see. That makes sense. Yeah, let's switch out. Point's not even matter in this fight. There we go. I, I just called in a friend. That's what I did. Huh, it just hopped over it. Oh my god, a little funny, me thinks. Let's see, uh, go ahead and stock. And yeah, uh, just hit him a little bit. There we go. Okay, well, you're not trying to steal the items. It's, uh, pretty easy actually. Uh, go ahead and just, uh, stock again. Just for a little bit of fun and giggles, me thinks. Special. Oh, I can't do this? Interesting. I do this. Easy. Settle it. Insuffer. Oh no. All right, that's fine. Bro, bro, give him my turn, bro. He spent all his boost, bro. All right, whatever. You're, you're still gonna die. Hold, hold this meteor storm. You thought we were gonna have fun in Xenosaga episode two? Too bad. Meteor storm. Let's see, uh, special, uh, I'm trying to cash out everything to be honest. Uh, yeah, we'll, we'll stock once. Stock once and then we'll like move in. Deploying armor field. I'm gonna pull in the shackle strat. What is this? Chidincha looking strat? What is this? Uh, uh, just do this anywhere. Special, do that. It is just a matter of time. Do that. I'll go ahead and boost. Stock. Uh, why, why are you popping off right now, sir? Sir, this is the puzzle dungeon. You're going to die. I, I just punch him. Dog, just punch him. Just, just go away. Those guys are so funny. They're, they're like that team Rocket in this game, for real. Oh my god. Madness overcomes Richard. What was that message? There is something wrong with Richard. What, what, what was that other thing? Oh my, there seems to be something wrong with Richard. Oh my god. Oh my god, Richard sweep. Wait, what is this? No, just in case I'm doing this. Oh, I can't go. Oh, this is where they came in. Oh no, that's the black hole. I see. See, uh. Medic for now. Hopefully I don't need to worry about that too much. Push the button? Yes, absolutely. Oh no, what is this? Oh, it's good for me. Isn't that the hole Richard shot through the wall? Listen, Richard, Richard did a lot of things, okay? He, 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 he's a busy man. It, it, it's hard to keep track of such a legend, all right? But I, I assume it is, yeah. The one he hit me with like the FNB? Let's see. I was gonna say now all the oxygen is escaping, but I guess it's changed y'all too much. It just adds a little bit of Feng Shui to the room, you know? It, it's fine, it's fine. It's nothing, it's nothing. Also, where do I go? I guess, I guess I just drop down again? To like where I was before and I just go on foot? Is there a? Yeah, I think there's a, a, yeah, there should be like a, yeah, there is a door to the right. Yeah, I'm just gonna go to the right then. Uh, that's fine. This could be a a little bit annoying to navigate, but it, it's easy enough, I guess. I just don't like it when, uh, they like, uh, just make you hit switches basically. And just navigate areas, but eh, that's not exactly a hot take, me thinks. Whatever. It's just that it's so slow. It's such a slow movement speed. You don't have like a dash. You, you don't have a dash. When you hold R2, you move slower. Uh, just another of Xenosaga's funny pranks. The HHA would not give points for the hole in the room. They don't appreciate the finer things in life, all right? And that's on them, that's on them. I, I like it a lot. I give a lot of points to it. And that's all that matters, you know, and really, the customer is always right. The consumer is always right. I know I'm right, therefore I'm right. Because I'm right. Because I am simply right. All right, all right, all right, let's speed things along. Let's do, uh. I guess I better save just in case. Oh, that probably won't need it. Let's see. We have run into dungeons there like very long in the past, which makes sense. We, we ran into, uh, it's a pretty short dungeon, relatively speaking. Oh, that's just like a solo Shion section, so I don't know if that really counts. The SSS. What is this? Secret key fourteen? What does that give me? Uh, bum, bum, oops. Menus are really hard to navigate for some reason. Uh, there we go. Fourteen, that is level three, class C rapid refresh. What does that do? Regeneration times two during reserve. Oh, see, re- regen. Well, I'm not scrolling that much. That doesn't seem that good. Eh, I mean, it's a passive, but eh, doesn't seem that crazy. I'm usually just heading like medic all anyway, in between fights. I like, that's, that's, that's the safe point for like the big guy, so it's, the comically oversized, uh, the safe point. Just adds a lot of Feng Shui, I think. Like the hole in the wall. All right, let's see how Jin does in fights. His level is pretty good. His skills are behind, but not too important. He can catch up pretty quickly. He'll probably catch up off stream. Just be like a, I might do like a psych quest off stream. Either way, this, this is like the game where I like, I'm, I'm kind of here for like the story, you know? Episode three? I'm, I want to do all of episode three, uh, on stream for sure. The hole in the wall is simply to see neighbors incoming. Yeah, it's like, uh, it's like Fig in like Slackers 2. It's like an enemy, you know? Watch out. See, I, I didn't know that enemy was there. I need someone to like yell, watch out, you know? Otherwise I just got people just telling, no, no escape, uh, stop right there, you know? Oh, I, I love the like, you can't get away from my sensors. Let's go. Anyways, uh. Do a little bit of analyzing for now. Uh, analyze on, uh, P2, B2, C. Hopefully they just all have the same weakness or a similar weakness. Aura fire slash, okay? Well, they're just gonna light me up, huh? Sketcher's light up the night. Uh, yeah, let's get information. Aura fire slash, yeah, same thing. You can't get away from my sensors. I, I love how, how quickly we got used to this because, just because of like, uh, you know, the, uh, the, the dire compression on the audio. Uh, the Stockholm syndrome of like, uh, old, old PS2 RPGs. Yep, aura fire slash, so Ziggy's pretty good. Co- uh, Chaos is probably pretty good. That's good to hear. Bum, 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 stocking. Oh my god, brother. Oh my, that was so unnecessary on Momo, oh my god, they are mean to Momo for some reason, why? They shot with like 200 rounds of that cannon. Good thing she heals it all back. Yo, Maximilian G4, yo, when they get a Maximilian as a guest on G4 TV, that's crazy. Let's see, boom, 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 stock again. And just do fights over and over. Uh, we want aura on fire, Ziggy's really good here, Chaos is really good, uh, do aura on her. "Grant me a miracle." Let's see, boom, boom. Gonna do aura on, uh... Jin as well. Let's go! Yeah, Ziggy's really nice, for sure, Ziggy already has 2200 HP, that's really good. That's really, really noticeable, especially compared to Momo's like, uh... One, uh... Damage. Also, I probably set up way too much, where are the actual zones, I need to know? It's probably BB, okay, it's probably BB. Yeah, I probably set up way too much on these enemies. Okay, but when will the Mystic Powers grant me a miracle? You need to obtain said Mystic Powers first, me thinks. Uh, if you can't do that, uh, no miracles, me thinks. Sorry, them's the breaks. Momo's still doing good damage, as always. Let's see, I'm gonna do attacker though. Boom, boom, boom. I'll just boost right here. Boom, boom, boom. They probably all have different zones. Yeah, they all have different zones, I want to figure them all out. It's gonna be annoying, do this. Oh, it's CB, oops. Whoa. Let me do that before I forget. CB... Broken, down, and you're dead. Yeah, Ziggy does so much damage too. At least he has the potential to do so much damage. Because, uh, he always hits her fire, just inherently. Uh, fire, pretty fire right now, I think. Let's see, uh, stock again. Stocking is just really good, I don't know, I don't know how I feel about it. It, it, the battle system is kinda weird, it's like, uh... I think it is really cool to have like mechanics that like really reward you and like very immediately as well. Uh, with like a lot of like a very like rapid... Rapid fire like, uh, burst damage that you can do, like just that... Any interval like in time, you can like just mess up any enemy at all. I think that's really cool. But at the same time, it feels like it's so weighted towards like, uh... Doing, uh, like these like very fast bursts of damage. Ooh, Jin with the air combo? They're like, uh, they're like, uh... It's way too optimal, so I feel like I've kinda like, sort of like broken down the combat into like a flowchart. And that's a little bit of a bummer. I'm sure this is still gonna be like tricky fights or whatnot, but... I feel like I kinda figured it out, he's like, I get the break, I knock him down, I do this over and over, that guy's at full health and he died. So stocking is like really strong compared to other options, it feels like. Which I guess they need a really stronger option, because they don't have like AoE attacks and whatnot, but... It feels like a little too strong, which is a bit of a shame, because... That just so happens to be the best strat, which means that, uh... You always spend like the first part of the fight, just like, uh, basically just like stocking over and over, you know, just do stock, stock, your buffs that you want, and then just do like burst damage all at once. I'm sure there's more to it, but it feels like a really good answer so far, especially because enemies don't really interrupt that in any way. Just do stock. Boom, boom, boom. I just realized Jin is as fast as Ziggy and Cosmos PC doesn't have the swimsuit yet. Hopefully we can get it pretty soon, because that is a good ability. Boom, 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 and then just do like, uh... What do you wanna do here? Uh... Once and then let Ziggy take over, C and then just like, uh... Do a bunch of attacks. Yep, that is way too much damage. And CB, bam, bam. I don't even need to like really go for the bulk, I actually need to like, uh... Oops, I need to do, uh, Momo instead. Oops, I messed it up there. Like, he just stays in the air like that. Oh my god. He's not even like spinning like a Xenoblade. Then I got picked up like, like he was a plushy toy in the claw machine and he got stuck there. I didn't even get that many points, what the hell? Jin's like, he's like, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, what are y'all doing? I guess I'll do my air combo for today, me thinks." Oh, very funny pranks that Xenosaga pulls on you. Yo, that team effort combo, Ziggy was emotional support, okay? Ziggy was very important during that combo, he had the stock, he had to do his little pop off, you know? Very, very important. Uh, did I wanna... Oh! Imagine your frame data! That obviously was my fault, but I'm gonna blame Jin instead. Oh, that's a fraud, you could surround the enemy, actually. It's quite easy, you do it by doing this. All of a sudden, I'm over here. Oh my god, they knock you down and they just keep lighting you up. Boom, boom, boom. Also, the last dungeon was really annoying, the winter dungeon? Because like, the enemies had such long attack animations. So I was just like, literally just like they're watching animations most of that time. Very annoying. But yeah, you get behind enemies, you also have to light them up this way, which is quite nice. Uh, do CB, bam, bam. This probably kills that enemy right there. Yeah, the elemental multiplier is really nice. For sure. I'm actually gonna spend some time applying that on, uh... On a Jin PC that doesn't have it. I'm also tempted to just bring in, uh, Chaos, which he might be good, but, uh... I just kinda wanna distribute points this way. Eh, I might just bring him out. Yeah, because he has like, uh, fire times 2... Times 3. That's a lot of damage. These guys only have like, not even 2K, uh, that's unnecessary amount of damage. So you're gonna do that. Bring it with Jin. PC. Gonna do, oops. Oh, I messed up the combo, I see. Boom, boom, I see why I messed it up. Yeah, Ziggy is like really good though, he has like such high defense and damage, that it's just like, uh... It's kinda ludicrously easy to mess up enemies. Boom, boom, stock a little bit. Boom, boom. I'll try to get the multipliers again once of, of course. Oh, I cancelled the turn, let's freaking go! My man's cancelled. Bam, bam. I'll let him fall for now. Yeah, and then just, uh, hit him a little bit. And let, oops, I was gonna let Momo, uh... Get that kill, but Ziggy decided to stomp the remainder of that guy's life out of him, so... And I get to, uh, set up the kill properly, but it's okay, it's okay. Uh, simply deserved, me thinks. Although, just for the sake of this, I think I'm gonna swap out Momo for Chaos for a little bit, since he has very good elements here. Uh, boom, boom. I wanna check one thing, what is Jin's stuff, it's all slash. Okay, yeah, as expected, that's fine, that's good enough. Uh, also, creating abilities is what we wanna do. Ziggy's doing really well so far. So he probably doesn't even need that many points, but we'll keep supplying it anyway. Uh, I don't need this ability, but I'm just gonna learn it to finish the class eventually. Boom, boom, what about Jin? Needs to be learning a lot of stuff. Uh, what should Jin learn? Ooh, this is really good, yeah. That's how I learned this class. Attacker is very good. He also needs another like, uh... Equipable, uh, skill, for sure. Now, what is up here? Boom, boom, boom. Okay, climbing ladders is so awkward, because it depends like on the camera angle, so sometimes you don't like climb it properly. Oh no. Oh wait. Now I'm gonna turn back, because you know what? That looks like progress, and I'm gonna go down here, because, uh, this might be an excellent optional item, me thinks. So, uh, hold on, back it up, back it up. Uh, hold on, go down here. Yeah, see, I, I, I know what I'm talking about sometimes. Ooh, that's actually, uh, way back. A little shortcut, me thinks. I love it here. I hate when the camera angle swaps in the middle of my ladder climb, instead of swapping what direction I'm going. Yeah, it makes it so annoying, now I don't, I don't know like, uh, what direction I put on my D-pad, on my, uh, real-life, uh, control stick. It's so annoying, do y'all deal with that? I'm so glad that like, I'm not the only person that has to deal with that. Also, I forgot to give Junior Momo their double attack, there we go. Silver duet. I have not used a single double attack since the beginning of the game, uh, I assume I just don't have to worry that much about it. But, I gotta take a look at it right now. It's just so hard to set up, also some characters don't have it. Boom, boom, boom. It's basically just, oh, we need to stock. Yeah, most of the time it's two stocks. And then boost. Actually, all of them are two stocks, except, uh, Shion and Momo's, I see. I think, I think both characters need two stocks. That could be good, though, I think that's where AoE attacks are. Uh, I'll try to look at them anyway. Seems kinda nice. Anyone who does that needs to be banned for making video games for a year, wait, is it like that meme? Like, uh... Like when Smoosh dropped in on the bay and, uh, like, uh... If, if, if you design a video game you are making, or whatever. Or... If you... If you make video game, then you ban, or whatever. Oh man. I only saw that after the fact, so when y'all were talking about that in the stream, I was like, "What the fuck are y'all talking about?" Oh my god. I am simply late to any and all trends, as we know. Oh my god. Don't move! I don't care, bro. Uh, who do you wanna give points to? I, I guess, I guess I'll... I guess I'll just run this team anyway, just to make it faster. Although, I guess I'm not struggling too much with the random encounters. Oh my god, something about like, just seeing like, Chaos loading without his shirt. I don't know. Something funny about that. That's why he's peed on, bro, they took his shirt, bro. Give it back! Let's see, boom, boom. When they light you up, they, they, they really light you up. If you're an NPC, you're in a video game, bro. I can't believe I'm an NPC, I hate it here. That's what all my friends say, bro, I'm an NPC, for real. Ziggy got blasted, yeah, they always be, they, they, they done been blasting us for some reason, I don't know why. Hard knockdown and all, let's see, uh... Go ahead and kill this guy. Well, it's not a kill by itself, I need to do this as well. Oops, I didn't get the follow-up. Eh, whatever, I got stock. He burned out of Chaos, okay, that's good. Boom, boom, CB bam. "If you are slower than my running speed, you are gone." Yo, yo, stay at the verge, for real, for real, I had to stock here. I like that, "You are gone, you are deleted." There we go, boom, boom, boom. Now let me follow up here and then do this. Oh, I gotta hit him like this. It's a little bit awkward. Oh, I did way too much damage, whoops. Uh, that was a little excessive, me thinks. Let's see, do this. Among, uh, the black void. Ohhh, oh no. I hate it. Let's see, uh, let's see. Never mind, I love it here, uh, stock again. Stocking is just way too good. For sure. Let me wait there, let me go with Ziggy here. BC bam bam. This should kill by itself. Also, because like, like, the effectiveness of attacks, uh, like stacks on top of each other? That also makes stocking like really much better than like, uh, single like normal attacks, which is kind of, uh... Which makes it like way better than like most of your options, I feel like. It's just way better to like, uh... Invest in stocks heavily, then cash out all at once? Than to like just do like single attacks, which is kind of a shame. I feel like I've kind of like broken the game down to some kind of a flowchart that makes it a little bit like, uh, a little bit solved. Of course, they still have ways to shake it up, but I feel like I kinda solved the game at a pretty, pretty early state. And, uh, hopefully that's not the case, but, uh... That's kinda like the impression I get. Although, I'm kinda just talking in circles about the same thing over and over. It'd be what it be. I can't tell if these guys are Utic or if these guys are like, uh... Like those hoodie guys that are talking to like, uh... What's his name? Uh, Mr. Burns, uh... Well, W or something? I forget his name, but it's okay, it's okay. It don't ma- it don't matter. I had to give, uh... Alright, now the stock. I need to start boosting, just like, uh, get something started. Uh, do Ether, do, uh... Flame Sword on yourself. Ooh, cool. Oops, I wanted to boost, whatever, uh, CB bam bam. Yeah, hold this damage, for real. Yeah, easy, easy money. Yeah, I would need like two stocks to like, uh, kill enemies consistently. But once I get them, darn, are they killed. There we go. Man, 142, just despite me, I hate you. Bam bam. Easy money! It's pretty cool, though, it is fun to like, uh, do a lot of damage all at once, because you like set up everything perfectly. That's pretty cool, that's a cool feeling. I just kinda hope it continues to be a cool feeling throughout the rest of the game. Although, they do the short games, eh, 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 you know? Do this, BC bam bam. Follow up with Jin. And do, oh, oh, he died, oh, he died, died. Oops, he launches into the air and Ziggy and Chaos cannot do anything, since he's gonna fall on the ground awkwardly. Oops. That is interesting, though, uh... You can knock them, uh... Into the air, and then they fall down, and then they're like, uh, they're like in down state, which is kind of interesting. So you kinda get like two for one, if you follow up immediately. That does make Cosmos and Jin seem pretty good. Although, not everyone can hit, uh, enemies in the air as well. So that's the detriment of it. I'm also just trying to like voice these things aloud to make sure I don't like, uh, miss anything valuable, uh, whatnot, or whatnot. Oh my god, bro! Who is this dude? Dude just floated in. Who are you? Oh, I actually gotta switch my people here. Ooh, oh yeah, I shouldn't even stock. Who are y'all, what the? Okay, yeah, alright, yeah, y'all, y'all actually cannot, genuinely cannot hit these enemies, so... Someone who can, yeah, Junior, get out here. Uh, you can hit them, but it's a little bit, eh, I'll leave you in. Fine, you can say, and, uh, change. Yeah, give me Momo. There we go, that's good enough. It looked like it's my turn. I haven't heard that one yet. Actually, you know what, we'll, we'll, we'll try this, uh, double attack, why not? It's two stocks, right? It can't be awful. See, meanwhile, I will do, uh... I'll do, uh... Analyze. These guys are probably weak to the same things. Oh no, Beam and Thunder, that's quite different, actually. Okay, good to check. Yeah, so I need, I need both of them stocked twice, I think. I need that, and that's Junior's turn, so I boost with Momo, and then I do double. Silver duet, single enemy, non-elemental chain of punishment. Uh, let's see, what does it look like? It's the cool animations, so I gotta do them all at least once. Oh, there's my Storm Waltz! Oh, these are pretty elaborate, though. Hey, yo. Oh, they, oh, he died! Well, I mean, he, he didn't die, but, yo, he got crushed, splattered and everything! Oh my god, that was brutal, but... Why did Two Kids got the most brutal attack on the team, oh my god. Also, that was kinda good, but also it was a lot of resources. So I don't know if that's really worth it. Just like stocking is probably just better. Man, they make all these cool animations and like, uh, the best option is to like probably not do them. Boom, boom. See, stock again. Yeah, stocking is just really strong. Oh my god, they, 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 they lit her up, oh my god. Oh my god, I felt bad about that one. I think that Two Kids should use that move more often. I think that two kids should use that move more often! Kids are just people to watch out for, what can you say? That's true. Uh, strongest characters in any video game, for real. Yeah, yeah, but, but to be fair, like, uh, if I'm like a soldier, and I see like, uh... I'm in a very dangerous situation, and I see kids with like, bows and guns running at me, I, 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 I know they're, I know they're, they're the real problems, you know? I know they're the ones to look out for! That's all I'm saying! Ahhh! Oh my god, eh, eh, she got messed up a little bit, me thinks. Unfortunate, oh, it's because it's in AOE, I was like, "How am I taking so much damage?" Okay, do, uh, this guy's actually a little bit annoying. Do Thunder Sword. Let's make sure Momo goes next, she probably do- does go next, but we'll make sure. Uh, let's do Medic All again. I'd be more scared the kid with the bow, personally, yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, you know? Yeah, if, if they got kids with the bows and guns, wa- and, and they're like 12 years old or whatever, like, they, they, they clearly belong more here. They, they clearly belong on the battlefield more than me, you know, so I'm the one that's afraid! Let's see, die, bro, these guys are really annoying, though. Also, I don't have to change my team comp. I guess these guys for sure, oh, they just have a lot of health, wha- what's going on here? They have a lot, a lot of health. That animation is very funny. Let's see, let's do Ether, do, uh... Do Thunder on, uh, Momo. Should be good enough, I think. That should kill him. Oh, for, oh, for sure! Yup! Oh, he dead, bro! Momo also did like, a headshot like, four times. That dude is uber dead! Uber, uber dead, oh my god! Momo Gaming, for real! All that work, just to get like... No... Man, all that work, just to get like, no, no, uh... No points, oh my god! Actually, yeah, I'll switch my party. Uh, Jin is fine, let's do... That's... Uh, I mean, Jujur's pretty good, but, uh, I'm curious about something. Oh, what if we got like, two air characters, we have to deal with air? I, I just wanted to see this real quick. Probably not, I can switch a kneebeat. Actually, does anyone have their old design? I'm just curious. Oh no, everyone has like, uh, well, no, I, I guess, uh, Zig- I was gonna say, everyone like, has a new outfit in this game, but... Ziggy, you know, Ziggy still has like, uh, his old outfit, which, to be honest, I don't even know if he has a different outfit in this game! I don't even know if he has a different outfit in episode 3, to be honest! The, the swimsuit is his new outfit, alright? I feel like Ziggy's the same in every game. To be completely honest. Boom, boom, boom! Oh, I was gonna be like, I was gonna say, we get to see the new, uh, Kodos, uh, uh, look, but no, I forgot that, uh... Swimsuits are simply the, the best, uh, the best, uh, military equipment ever! Ziggy's the same in every game, I guess they found perfection, and they said, "You know what? You, you can't go any further than this, you know? This is as far as you can go." Oh, you know what? Xian would be pretty good against these enemies, wouldn't she? She'd be pretty decent here. He just straight up never changes outfit like a cartoon character! Eh, 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 simply fair enough, you know? Like, uh, there needs to be a gag about like, uh, like them opening, uh, Ziggy's wardrobe, which is like, the same outfit every, every single time. I mean, it makes sense in the universe, but... Eh, whatever, you know, whatever, I, 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 I don't care! Eh, lazy, lazy devs, me thinks. Whatever. Uh, anyways, uh... Thunder Sword on her. We're just gonna see like, what this looks like. Thunder Sword, uh... Thunder Sword! I still don't know what she says, I think she says like, German or something. Eh, it'll be fine, we'll, we'll find out one day. And then, uh, another... Thunder Sword on our friend, uh, Jin Uzuki. Boom, boom, from Momo, no last name? I guess her last name is kind of like Mizrahi, right? Momo Mizra- Momo Mizrahi? That's a, that's a powerful combination. Die! Oh, do they have a break? Can I even break those enemies? Also, yeah, if I hit like, with thunder a million times, what does that look like? Yeah, it keeps going! That's pretty good! Although, it doesn't like, multiply like, eh, eh, at insane a rate. Actually, yeah, these guys, oh, these guys just have like, a lot of health. Although, Momo kinda deletes them for free, which is nice. See, boom, boom! Stock a little bit here, I'm not gonna be able to get it right here. They just do like, no damage, is the thing. Boom, boom! Let's see, do this... Oh, oh, his zone is, oh wait, there's a guy right here, I, I literally didn't even see this guy. Hey, go ahead and boost with, uh... Yeah, Jin, Jin could probably kill her, yeah. Two hits, easy! Boom, boom, boom! I like how he attacks, and then he cheats, and then he un-cheats and attacks again! Uh, ve- ve- very funny chain of events. Oh, she probably just kills you. Easy bullseye! Uh, I probably should move it to the back, but it's okay. Uh, eh, just hit him. Oh, wait, it, it was Momo's turn again? Oh my god, Mo- Momo just gets so many turns! It's gonna be a shame when we get to episode 3, and they like, nerf Momo. Because how they, they, they change how speed works. I mean, fair enough, to let other people shine, but you know? "He is simply in a paradise where he wants to separate himself from his humanity, so having the same outfit where, where everyone else gets a new set of clothes is excellent gameplay and story integration." Yeah, yeah, it's, it's not lazy devs, eh, there's a purpose for it! Also, eh, speaking of a purpose for it, this is what it looks like when I don't boost.